Good evening, everyone. Cold order, the planning board meeting, Wolfboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Still handing out some papers, bear with us for a moment, please. So, the planning board members, to my left, we have Jane Nielsen, Vaughn Dugan, Peter Goodwin, Roger Murray, and to my right, we have Steve Webster, John Thurston is sitting in as the alternate select board member, Kathy Barnard, and Julie Jacobs. The first item on the agenda is... The first item on the agenda is Atwell on Elm that's continued until July 15th, 2025. The next item on the agenda is Brewster Academy Site Plan Review, Parking Lot Reconfiguration, AD Academy Drive Tax Map 218-150, Case 2025-14, Continued Public Hearing from May 6th, 2025. And...
Stand from this one, Doc.
Yep. So Steve will stand, or step down.
I sat before.
And Kathy sat before, so she will continue to sit. Can we do that in the midst of a... So, when we... Right, right. So as far as an alternate for this hearing, I'm trying to remember, Jane, were you here at the first Brewster?
I was here.
Yeah, and Julie, were you here as well? For the first Brewster, the first part of the Brewster? Can you sit as alternate for this?
I'm the alternate.
Yeah, but I think we need two.
Oh, oh, yes.
Since it's a repeat, can you add one?
Well, we don't, so Paul O'Brien sat previously, but John wasn't here for the first part.
Right.
And you were, you were.
Right. What I'm saying is, since this is a continuation, can we, can we add?
That's, I'm not sure of the process, to be honest. I haven't had this before.
Julie was here last time.
Right.
And so was Jane, so they're familiar with the application.
Right, so I would think for continuity purposes, either of you would be able to sit. And I honestly don't remember who was next in line.
Would you, I don't, you don't, you don't have a selectman's representative?
Yeah.
Well, certainly, so John, you certainly will be able to engage in the discussions as a select board representative, but I don't think you're able to vote because you weren't here for the first portion of it. Is that right? I'm honestly not sure.
That's the way it's been before.
Yeah, I think you have to vote, I think you have had to participated in all the deliberations from the previous sessions.
Just for voting?
For voting purposes, yes. Not for deliberations, but for voting purposes. So, let's nominate Ca... Julie.
Okay, but it would have said in the minutes, what was the date? I think that's what Leanne's looking up. Just across all the Ts for fun.
According to the May 6th minutes, the only person, the only member that was absent was Julie.
I wasn't here for the first one. I must have been here for the...
So it doesn't appear as though any alternates were appointed to sit in for a full member.
That's right. That's right. Oh.
We saw, we saw this once or twice before.
Mm-hmm.
It came to...
Yes, so we've...
So Jane and Kathy were present for the...
Yeah, right.
And were part of the discussion.
All right, so we would then appoint Jane and Kathy as alternates for tonight's session.
Yes.
Very good. Will you accept those all? Jane? Yeah? All right, use your mic. Use the microphone. One to the other side of you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry for the confusion, folks. And we've just unfortunately been handed the Planning Director Review a few minutes ago. I assume you received it at the same time. Yes, so if we, give us just a moment to, you have to turn on the microphone to use it. And if we have a moment to read through this.
Hello?
There you go. Hey, it's working. Hey!
Happy to start whenever.
Yes, just one more point. John was kind enough to look up some of the ordinances for New Hampshire and discovered that he is eligible to sit in place of Paul O'Brien, who sat on the first part of this. So Jane, we won't need you for this, and we'll allow John to be sitting as a full and voting member for this evening.
No, 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 she's sitting for Nancy.
Oh, you were sitting for Nancy?
Yeah.
I was here at the...
Yes, right.
No, I understand that you were here.
And you're replacing Nancy, who is not here.
Ah, okay, so the, so we have Jane as the alternate. And not Kathy?
And John, no, no, and Kathy.
And Kathy.
Sitting for Steve, and John is able to vote.
Okay, so voting is Kathy, John, myself, Roger, Peter, Vaughn, and Jane. Very good.
Just as a point of clarification, John, does that state that even if you were not here, you can participate and vote? That would be my concern.
I can be designated to take their place, including a continuance of an application.
All right, I think we're ready to go.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone, again. I'm Andy Smith with DSKA Architects and Planners. I'm here to present the Brewster Academy Academic Courtyard Project. This is our fourth time here, I think, including TRC, so hoping to kind of go through the...
Can you speak more clearly to the mic, please?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So hoping to go through the list here and kind of check off, make sure we've met all of the criteria and met all of your concerns. So we were just handed the Planning Director Review a few moments ago, so just like you, I was skimming through this as well. We also received the Ty &amp; Bond Peer Review that came in, I believe that was today, early today. And so in that one, I'll start there, just noting that there didn't seem like there was anything that came up of an outstanding concern. Seems like all the comments were resolved from the Ty &amp; Bond Review. I can go through the Planning Director Review and talk about the bullet points here, if that's helpful. Page three, so we're going through access, parking, circulation, landscaping, et cetera. Access, this was brought up especially at the last meeting. Butters have submitted a letter regarding use of Green Street for school access. In addition, staff has found a 2000 set of correspondence in which it appears the selectmen decided the Green Street would not be a through street, and that sign should be installed stating "No Through Traffic." The planning board should confirm this sign is still installed. So it sounds like perhaps that is the course of action for that note.
Right. I wouldn't at this point say that's the course of action, but I did this evening verify that that "No Through Street" sign still is on, posted.
Still installed? Excellent. Thank you. All right, parking and circulation, this, we had back and forth with the fire department with Chief Sadi. He's reviewed the plans and approved the 12-foot fire access to the south of Estherbrook Building and the turnaround off of Academy Drive next to Grayson. Those, those updates to the plans were submitted with this latest resubmission. Landscaping, I'm going to, oh, no, our landscaper just showed up. The planning board should have the architect designer confirm that landscaping meets 173-27.4 and is 75% for the tree list in the publication in Attachment A. Have you seen my guy? Maybe we'll, we'll come back to that one. Storm drainage, that was related to the Ty &amp; Bond Review, so it says, please see comments in the letter from Ty &amp; Bond from June 2nd, and it's, appears that all requirements have been met. Water, is irrigation proposed as part of this plan? I don't believe we've included that as part of the actual submission documents. It doesn't mean it wouldn't be installed later, but it's not part of this review or this submission. Is that correct, Peter?
Are you suggesting that it is, it's not proposed as part of this plan? That's what you're affirming?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Yes. Surridge, not applicable. Protection of natural resources, there does not appear to be an erosion control plan as part of the plan set. We did include an erosion control plan. Sean, if you want to speak to that?
Sure. Sean Malone, no consulting group, civil engineer for the project. Yes, we do show erosion sedimentation controls on both C1 and C2, as well as additional erosion control construction phase notes on C3 and details on C4. Just want to note that this was also a comment from Ty &amp; Bond originally, and they did indicate that this question had been resolved with their latest submission.
Thank you.
Utilities, and I guess at any point, if you want to interrupt, I'd be happy to stop talking to those comments. The municipal electric department recommends voltage conversion if the overhead pole line will be eliminated and replaced with a new underground. New underground system specs are required, may require design review. It sounds like that is gonna go forward or is required as part of our electrical upgrades. We've tried to reach out to Berry several times, Brewster has, and has not been able to get in contact with him for further discussion. So as part of our ongoing kind of development of this project, working with the contractor, we'll continue to kind of develop those specifications and meet the town's requirements.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sure. Is that better? Okay.
You need to stay.
Okay, I'll stay right here. Signage is NA, special flood hazard area, NA snow storage, we did add that to the plan set. Lighting, lighting specs were submitted as part of the original submission, so the light fixtures and photometrics were included. Noise, not applicable. And then we go on to, I think slightly more administrative, security for improvements. And then there's a thing about zoning compliance, which I would just ask if we know if there's anything out of this copying of the zoning ordinances that is required for this project. What I do see is on bottom of page six, that under "Review for Acceptance," staff recommends this application is complete and ready for acceptance.
Are we gonna hear from the landscape person?
Hi there. I'm looking at the, the site plan regulation, specifically the regulation regarding natives and reuse of trees, and we are certainly in compliance with all of this. And then there's the requirement of after implementation of our plantings, specifically they're calling out streetscape, buffer, and screening. The one-year performance is part of the contractor's responsibility, so we will be also complying with those regulations.
Is there anything, is there anything else out of this document that we have not addressed? Or, trying to find that out as well. If there's anything else, but we're happy to comment on anything.
Any comments or questions from the board? John?
So can you go through the landscape plantings and the buffer for the parking lot for us?
I would call your attention to the planting plan. Nope. Nope. They have it. Sir, let me pull that by yourself.
I'm just asking if you could tell us who you are.
Sure, I'm Naomi Cotrell, Principal Landscape Architect at Crowley Cotrell Landscape Architecture. And we have a planting plan in the L series.
The L 401?
Thank you. Let me just pull that up here. So between the street, between South Main Street and the new parking lot, we have a series of buffer plantings, both trees and then an understory layer to both screen the cars at a lower level. So between, again, between the, sorry, between South Main and the new parking lot, we have some rhododendron and ilex evergreen species to layer up to screen some of the lower level as well as some of the existing utilities. We have continued the plantings that relate really more to the residential units to really fill the holes. But then we do have around, at the edge of the, the parking lot, let me just get my exact species here. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Right. So those are elm trees here along the edge. We have a, can you just come a little closer? Sorry. We have some sweet gum trees. In the inside here, within this, in the wetland area, we have red maple. So all of these are actually natives and comply with the conditions of the regulations that we just spoke about. We have honey locusts here along either side of this main path. And then inside the quad itself, we are planting, again, those are, I'm having this in my plan. We have oaks all along the edges here. So as far as the screening that is concerned, we have prepared some before and after images that you have in your packet from previous submissions. Really what we're trying to do is use a series of layers to really screen this from the road. Does that answer your question?
So what's, so the maple trees that are there on the, on the Estherbrook roadway, are those, are those staying there?
We aren't taking out any existing trees along Estherbrook at all.
So they're in the, they're in the right-of-way?
The, all of the trees that are along this, this area and all the trees along here, the only trees that we're removing from the plan are actually within the area that is within the campus itself for relocating the parking lot and setting up some new pathways through the center.
So where Estherbrook Road comes in, you're proposing a new driveway entrance, go to the plan.
So this...
Right there by your finger, down, right there.
Here.
There's an island of trees, there's a strip of trees right there that are maples that are along there.
And those are, we're not taking any out. This, this is the existing, where the existing parking lot is right now, and we're not taking any trees out from here.
But those other, those other trees are in the right-of-way of the road. That's why I'm making light of...
Can you, can you point to me where your...
Right, right here, these are, so there's maple trees right here that are in this 50-foot right-of-way.
If we go to the survey, can we go back to that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So we aren't taking out any trees within here. Our survey doesn't show any within this area here. We actually are using a lot of the existing curb cut through here, and so we, there's actually, there are no trees in this zone. And this is the existing curb cut, so if you go to... We're using a very, within that same area, we have very limited disturbance.
So how come you don't show them on your plan?
So I don't have them here on our survey, which must mean that they're below a certain caliber inch?
They're right, they're right off the edge of the road, I mean, and, but the setback goes way back to the...
So this is all existing parking lot, and we're coming in here. So I guess I'm unclear, our, again, our existing conditions don't show any trees in that zone. We have them all along the side here and then continuing down, but we don't have, this is the existing parking lot, and we're coming in that zone.
You have four maple trees right there along that way.
Well, I'm sorry if our, our existing conditions don't show that.
Well, it says reuse trees on the, on the plan in your, in your write-up, so I was trying to understand.
So the existing trees that we're relocating are on the interior of the, of the, so the ones that are marked transplants? These, which are, these are getting all replanted within the project?
So you don't have an answer for me?
Do we have, I don't have clarification on this here. Or is it these trees, there's trees in here? So I think it's because our survey doesn't show, but I, if we can show that, that existing image, the, within that zone?
Those are the four trees.
Yeah, so those are on the outside of our prop, those are not within our, so those are right here on the outside of the, of the, the project, on the other side of the road.
So this is the church side.
Exactly.
And this is the other side.
Right.
So that's on this side of the road, this is where your parking lot is.
So this is the...
It just shows this one on the corner.
No, I'm saying this one, this one, and this one, this is where your parking lot is.
And this is the other side of the street. Here, here's the parking lot.
That's the orientation right there.
No, it's that way. So the existing parking lot is where we're putting the parking lot?
Right. These trees that you're citing, these ones on this side of the street.
I'm talking about neither of them actually.
Yeah, these three right here.
So these remain?
Yeah.
This remains? And I, that would, it would be that?
But that's what I'm saying, it's...
This one on Brewster property, as well as this one?
That's this, that's right.
So this one right here, this mark right here, the two goes on Brewster property.
So this, this is, this one, this one, this one right here?
Correct, and this is the third one, and that one is remaining, that one's not being touched.
So that one's inside the buffer, this is, that's the right-of-way, that's the roadway right there. See, it's inside the, inside the, so it's on the town's...
So that, to remain, to remain.
So why isn't it, I mean, it's in the, it's in the roadway.
It's the town's tree, we're not touching it.
You planted those trees.
But, but these don't have to change.
It's outside of the scope of work there, so it doesn't have to be moved or touched at all.
Well, I'm saying, it is, it's encroaching on the roadway, that's what I'm saying, it's encroaching on the roadway. And if you're gonna do the work on it, you, you should be addressing those trees that are...
Are you asking for it to be removed?
I'm asking you to address the trees that are in, in the town's right-of-way, yes.
One tree, right, correct? Just one tree.
One, one.
I guess if the board wants it, move it. Move it if you want to. Go, I can't speak to, planted it, I can't speak to anyone else.
You mean, if it's in the town, right-of-way, it would seem to be the town's tree.
So John, I guess I'm a little confused as to what the issue is here. Could you explain it to me?
So they, they're redoing the, the parking lot, and if they're redoing the parking lot and the tree is in the town's right-of-way, that it's, I'm trying to get them to move their stuff back out of the town's right-of-way because eventually... because eventually the tree will be in the road. It encroaches on the, on the snowplow. It pushes everything, it's a town road. It pushes everything out into the town road and forces it back. It doesn't allow the town to do their maintenance. There's, there's granite posts there and there's trees right there. And that's in the, that's in the town's right-of-way. So I'm asking them, if they're doing the parking lot over, they should move those, the tree out of the town's property and move it onto their own property.
Okay. It's, it's not clear to me why they should be responsible for-
We didn't plant the trees. They planted them.
Okay.
They encroached into the town's right-of-way with those trees that they planted and put their granite posts up against the road right there.
Okay, I understand.
And now I get a point to address those trees. But before, I didn't get a chance to address those trees just because they were just, Brewster just went and put that parking lot area in and then put the trees out right up next to the road so that they could push their way out into Estabrook Way. And so I'm saying, since they're going to redo that parking lot, they should move their trees out of the town's right-of-way so Steve, Randall, and Winter Maintenance can happen. And, and they're on their own property.
I don't think that falls within the jurisdiction of the Planning Board's site review approval. I think if there's an issue with the trees, then it's up to the Public Works Department to take it up with Brewster if necessary or whomever.
It's part of this application, Roger.
So certainly that's a point for discussion. Let's put that aside for a moment. And are there any other issues? That's going to, we'll just put that in the parking lot for a moment. And we'll address all the contentious points at the end.
So another issue is something that's pointed out in this recent review. Security is recommended for the project. Doesn't say, it suggests that tie-in bond would do it. They recommend how much, but we don't have any numbers. We don't have any information.
I assume what you're asking Vaughn is what the value of the security should be? Is that right?
Yeah. We're going to impose one.
I can't imagine that if Brewster starts this project, they're going to leave it undone. I, you know, it's right in the middle of their campus. They're going to get it done. So you really need a bond on it. It's a recommendation, I understand. But this is not something which to me is going to be undone, not finished.
Typically with a financial charity, the applicant will submit a cost estimate for the site work. It's to the town. The town will submit it to tie-in bond. They'll review it. And that's where the, that's where the estimate comes from.
So, so in theory, at some future point, tie-in bond would recommend the amount? Is that right?
The applicant submits the cost estimate. We forward it to tie-in bond to review it. And then they make a recommendation.
Tie-in bond would make a recommendation?
Based on the cost estimate.
Yes.
To make sure that what they have recommended in the cost estimate covers what the plan detail-
Mm-hmm.
Is covered in the plan detail. That's the way the Planning Board has-
Has done in the past?
For years.
Thank you.
So I can say, Doug, every, Peter Gilligan Brewster Academy, every project that we've come up, we've had a, it's been a landscaping deposit that we've had to put to make sure that we finish the project. Right now, we have one for a project that we did last year. And it's held by the town. Well, how, historically, how we'd always do it is we come down to the Planning Board, meet with whoever was there. They'd come up with a calculation and we write them a check. So it usually was just a, you know, it's a, I think it was 10% of whatever piece of the landscaping was at what that point. Usually it's about $10,000 on a project of this size. And we're happy to, you know, to go through that same process that we have on every project that we've done.
Right. And once it's signed off by tie-in bond, they submit the cost estimate, including the 10%, 15%, whatever tie-in bond feels is appropriate. And then we put the, we, we submit the check to the treasurer, which goes in escrow. And then the construction observation agreement is signed by both parties, the town and the applicant. And then we have inspections, erosion control, whatever is set up in that construction observation agreement. It could be one inspection. It could be five. It depends on the size of the project. This is a smaller project. It could only be one or two.
Yeah. Vaughn, does that address your concern?
Yes.
Thank you.
That seems to be stuff that we never see because that happens at the town staff level.
Well, it hasn't, the practice ended, well, didn't end.
Petered out?
Petered out for a couple of years. And we're getting back into the practice of it to secure, to make sure that projects are built to the plans that are approved. And this is assurance that that will happen. And then if there's money left over in escrow, we return it. And we just, it's a release of the financial charity. That comes back before the board.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So could you go over the lighting plan?
So the, the best, the best page for you to look at and on would be the L 201. And I, and so you'll see that there are little symbols that are called, that are called P, P3, P2. What we're doing around the- You can see on this plan, they're actually shown as yellow illuminations. But we have post lights around the perimeter of the parking lot and then two in the center that, these are all full cutoff downlights that are illuminating the paved surface. We have also the same pedestrian scaled post lights that we have for the rest of campus that illuminate the pathways. And these are the same as the, as the other that are throughout campus again. They are shown on, in detail on L 602, sorry, L 603. They're the historic lumiere. Again, this is a, it has a solid cap and, and the light is actually up in the top of the cap and it's downlit. And the shorter poles, again, are the ones, the pedestrian poles that are shown at detail one on L 603 to match the campus standard. And then the taller ones are the ones that will be around the parking lot. Again, they are, they're direct, directed down with shields on the back sides. So there won't be any lights built in Main Street. Sorry. And then shielded also towards Estabrook so that all of the light is down and, and focused on the paved surface. There's no, the only other lights that we have are lights that are within handrails that lead up to the academic building. So lit handrails similar to match the ones that were installed on the Grayson project.
So those are full cutoff? And so what's the, what's the width of the, of the cut?
The distribution?
Yes.
Meaning how far away from the pole? Do we have that on the electrical? So that, we'll just, if you just take a minute, we can pull that up on the electrical. We-
The reason that I'm asking, is it going to cover the whole parking lot enough?
And, and we submitted photometric plan and specifications, cut sheets for all of the lighting fixtures. So you should have that information in there as well.
I have, I have this, this sheet right here, but it doesn't show the, the overlap of the-
Right. You should see the light values in the photometric plan in, in terms of light distribution.
Which, which page should I be looking at?
That came in in one of the first submissions, I believe? First or second submission for this project? So not in the most recent resubmission. Everyone, the original documents has a photometric plan.
John, that was included in one of the early plans. It may not have been in the packet you picked up this week.
Again, there, it's not only lights on the perimeter, but we do have these double-headed fixtures which are shown again on L 603. The, the dual head is detail three. And, and so the photometric plan does show that our distribution hits the whole parking lot.
So, so it is true that all this lighting is dark, dark sky compliant as well as protecting the surrounding roadways as, as this is being built?
Yes.
All right. That's good. So I've got another question relative to the tie-in bond letter. Page three dated May 21st, 2025. In the stormwater management report says the applicant should provide calculations for pollutant loading and removal volumes for each best management practice as in a GIS file containing the coordinates of all BMPs constructed as part of this project. In accordance with the stormwater regulations, there should be a minimum of 80% total suspended solids removal and 50% removal for both phosphorus and nitrogen. Your reply was the stormwater regulations state all newly generated stormwater from new development shall be treated on the site. A development plan shall include provisions to retain natural pre-development watershed areas on the site by using the natural flow patterns. The proposed project reduces the amount of impervious surface within the project area by approximately 10% and therefore does not have any newly generated stormwater to calculate pollutant loading and removal volumes. In addition, it was discussed with the Planning Board that the site has shallow till and high groundwater which significantly, significantly limits the ability to infiltrate stormwater. And the project has incorporated additional BMPs to the extent practical to reduce pollutant loading even further than the new filter basin. I still come back to what the, what the tie-in bonds said about should, as part of the project in accordance with the stormwater regulations, there should be a minimum of 80% total suspended solids removal and 50% for both phosphorus and nitrogen. Are you, are you doing that?
Well, as we pointed out in, you just read, there is no new generated stormwater from this project. There's actually a reduction in stormwater about by the 10% reduction of impervious area. So just by that nature itself, we're lessening the TSS. We're lessening the phosphorus that are going through the site, through the existing BMPs and down to the lake. So we are complying with the regulation.
So you-
And, and tie-in bond did agree with our analysis of that.
They did? I didn't see that.
Yes, it was in their letter they just issued. They indicated the comment was resolved.
Okay. Just answering that because the storm, the Waters Committee is going to be looking at that.
Sure. Yep.
All right. One of the concerns voiced at previous meetings was traffic on Green Street. And there's, I guess, more than a 20-year history of concerns there. Can you speak to how you're addressing that, please?
Thanks, Doug. After the last meeting, we went back. I couldn't make a, a decision here without speaking with my team. But Kristi Karen wrote a letter, and it should be in your packet, where we, to, to help with the, the issues that the residents of Green Street have. And we did agree that we would put a speed bump on our property before the exit to Green Street. And we also are going to amend our contract with our Smith Center Gym Center members that we have, which is where we open up our gym to the community, where we have people come in, which is one of the main areas of traffic flow to the Smith, where we would put as a requirement of their membership that they have to enter and exit through the main entrance or through Estabrook Drive. So that they, we would put that, so all of that additional traffic from the gym members would, would knock in. That's really the only thing we can control like that because we control the membership. And we thought that was a, you know, a nice end road to go with the residents of Green Street.
One of the concerns I'd heard was traffic generated from summer programs down at the soccer fields, things of that nature. And I guess it could be parents or organizations coming in to pick up or drop off. Is there any way to address those concerns?
And again, like I said at the last meeting, we are not increasing any traffic onto campus, right? So this is, the whole idea of the change of this parking lot is a reduction to traffic that is coming onto campus. So I don't, I don't have a way to, to address a, a non-increase in traffic. You know, so the, the whole idea is that we won't be increasing traffic on campus.
But you are eliminating one of the access points. So it will be more concentrated in other areas.
I think could be is a way to, way to probably frame that. The whole idea is that people will be coming onto Brewster's property to, to do whatever business that they have on campus, either to the new parking lot to handle that, that volume of people coming on and then, and then exiting directly from the same way they came on.
I think, I think Vaughn, you could rephrase that by saying they're eliminating two areas because Academy Drive is being eliminated and the other exit on the, of the main entrance is being eliminated. So there's actually two areas that are being eliminated, which is basically forcing everything to Green Street. And I read the attorney's comments of, of, of years ago. And I have some serious concerns with that, with that Green Street.
I'm not, I'm not clear on what the second, we're only, we're not eliminating a second exit on campus.
So you have, you have, you have, you have one, one here that you're, you have in the red. And, and the only other, the flow of traffic follows over here. It doesn't follow the other, doesn't follow the other entrance there. So you're only showing one, one, one red line.
So that's just for the fire? That's for the, that's the, the, the page for the fire department? So what you're looking at there is what we worked on with Chief Zotti back and forth over the last month.
Okay. So, so the, so where does the traffic go down this side? When it comes down, just goes, just, just goes in and then it's got nowhere to go, but it has to go all the way to the other side?
It would, John, it would, it would be conducting whatever business they have on campus and leaving through the same entrance they came. The exit that is on the other side of Academy is not getting taken away. It's not a one-way road. It's a two-way street.
I, I, I can appreciate your, your comment. But again, when you get down here and you eliminate Academy Drive, your, your people aren't going up Academy Drive anymore and going out. They're going off and out to the Green Street way. And so, again, I, I read the, I read the letters from the abutters. I read the letters from the, the attorney back in the day. And they said they couldn't eliminate usage from that road. As far as I'm concerned, sitting on this, looking at this, it's a safety hazard because people are coming up Pine Street. They're looking up, they're looking back. There's a ton of traffic. The people are trying to make a decision. They come up Pine Street. Now they're going to have to deal with people coming across from Green Street trying to decide whether or not they're going to see those people pull in. I mean, you're, you're really adding a lot more traffic to that, to that spot. And you're gonna, you're gonna get people jeopardizing their safety right there.
John, the only thing I can speak to is that we're not adding any additional traffic to campus. People who are coming in, it's not a through street. It is a, you're onto campus, and they are able to leave the same way they came. The argument that you're putting is that because we're eliminating one egress, that is going to create more traffic. The counterargument could be because we're eliminating an ingress, it should do the opposite, right?
Well, you're not...
We're eliminating a way for people to come onto campus from the other side of Academy Drive. Correct? Right, on the other side of Estabrook.
That's what you're saying. I'm saying, again, you're forcing people, when they get down to the Picney Boathouse, that the way out is going to be up past the Smith Center and up Green Street. That's what you're saying.
I believe in the last hearing, there was discussion as to how many speed bumps were on the road that were going to be eliminated because they were going right through campus and with lots of student traffic. And so I think that at that time, there was a discussion which ended up saying that that really was not a route people took anyway. It's a little while since I heard that. At the same time, it was not the preferred route for getting out in any way, from what my recollection is.
Yeah, Peter, and that's why we agreed to put the speed bump in over on Green Street.
So the speed bump is going to slow people down, but it's not going to keep the amount of trip vehicles. Did you do a trip count of vehicles that would go out that exit over there?
We discussed this pretty at length at the last meeting.
I have a random question. What about your entrance on Clark Road? That could be opened up and alleviate some of the problems for all the people that live down at that end.
And when we spoke here last time, we came up with a good solution for what we had, and that wasn't part of that solution that we came up with. That would be a whole nother, we would have to get in a whole nother study. That is not the project that we're presenting.
But isn't that an entrance anyway on Clark Road? Just has a fence on it?
It's gated.
Yeah, it's a blocked entrance, yep.
You know, as somebody who's gone on off the Brewster campus with some degree of frequency, I've always went up Academy Drive to get out. Wouldn't go to any athletic events. Down in here, you'd go up that way. I basically never used Green Street. But after the last meeting, I took a drive down Green Street. And the street's two cars wide. And when you get to Brewster, you've got the stone pillars, which are not two cars wide. And when you get into the section by where the dormitory is, the road is in poor shape. It's one car wide. And when you get to the Smith Center, their parking space is back right out into the traveled way and would block it. And if there's a concern about students, I mean, there's a big flow of people out of the Smith Center and across the road. And I think you're going to find, it just seems to me that anybody who comes in Academy Drive to the Picney Boathouse or any further, they're going to go out Green Street because there really isn't a way to not go out Green Street. And the road is in terrible shape going up past the dorm there. And, you know, I like you moving your parking lot. I like what you're doing. But I think that Green Street exit is a problem. You know, if there was a parking, you know, maybe you can't squeeze between the Barrett House and Smith Center to connect to Estabrook Road. But maybe if there was some parking or someplace in there that doesn't funnel you out onto Green Street, that would help.
And I think the answer to that is the project that we've proposed, which is to put a new parking lot along Main Street with access directly off of Estabrook and to funnel most of the traffic to that new parking lot. And that will be kind of a central campus parking for the campus. It'll be a lot like many colleges or universities campuses, where you have parking at the periphery. You go and park, you walk through campus. There's still access for ADA spots, for the fire access. That's what we're trying to maintain around the campus. But the entire purpose of this project is to push that vehicular traffic to the perimeter and keep it out of the center of campus.
But you don't do that for everybody who's going to the Picney Boathouse or is going to any of the athletic events down there. I mean, they park all up and down there. And they don't have a way of easily getting turned around and going back out. You know, this doesn't really discourage them from doing what you're saying. I'd be all in favor of something that would discourage them. But it really seems like there's a bottleneck there.
I would make a wager that if you put three speed bumps between Green Street and the Smith Center, no one would drive that way. That would be my opinion. I just, you know, speed bumps drive you nuts. And so you're not going to go that way. And I would even say that the van systems that you have to transport students, those guys aren't going to drive that way either. They'll go out Academy Road. So if we end up, if you modified a plan to have three speed bumps in there, it's not going to be a way. I'd gull. I'm sorry, and that's my opinion.
But you're going to need a way for people to turn around to avoid the speed bumps.
Right, and I think there's space down there, right? Yeah. And last time we were here, we talked about one speed bump, so we agreed to it. You know, and now we're trying to do the best thing for the will of board and trying to do what's right for everybody that's around here. So I think it's, you know, it's tough to make those decisions in real time when we're right here. You know, it's sort of like we're litigating it on-site rather than having a plan that we bring to you. So I agree with what you're saying, Peter. I do believe that the addition of the speed bump in that area will definitely dissuade people from coming that way. And to Andy's point, though, the whole idea is that we're trying to change the entire way that traffic flows on campus to eliminate people that are doing the drive-through, as John's saying, where it's a drive-to and then head out from what you're doing. And that is the idea of this project, to make it, by putting this parking lot here, we're taking all of our centralized parking and put it closer to the road where people don't have to come on campus anymore.
You haven't come up with a good plan on that road. Again, I would encourage my board to not approve this plan and not to allow Green Street to be the second road out. So that Green Street takes all the traffic, and the residents that are on Green Street take all the traffic, and that people coming out of Pine Street don't have to fight for the road when they know people are crossing the street. The last three times I came out of Pine Street, I saw the Brewster vans coming out. And I was thinking, and I was like, why are these Brewster vans keep on coming out of Green Street? And well, to me, now I understand. It's a, you know, they're going down around the backside, and then they're coming out. So again, for the board, you have to think of the safety. This road is not a good road on Green Street. I would actually make a motion not to allow Green Street to be used for through traffic.
Why is Clark Road gated?
It's been gated for the past 20 years. I don't have an answer to why.
So perhaps the solution is that the exit, instead of going out Green Street, would be going out Clark Road?
It's something that I could discuss with my team. It's just something I can't make a determination to do right now while we're here.
Would you consider putting some parking behind Smith Center?
Not as part, I don't think we could as part of this project, Roger. It would just, it's an extreme expense to put the parking in, plus we'd have to redo the entire plan.
You see what the reason is that you can't hook up to Estabrook there?
Excuse me?
What's the reason that you can't hook up to the end of Estabrook Road there?
There's a private residence at the end of Estabrook Road.
Yeah, and a walkway that goes down to...
There's not enough space, Julie.
There's not enough space. That's the reason?
Yeah, there's not enough space there with the private residence right next door.
You actually could widen that right up to the back of the Smith Center. There's a small road. I was down there today to look at it. You could, I see on the design, the boundary for the private residence, it follows with inside the roadway. And you could, if that was the case, you could go up the end of that. I don't know what, you would be coming onto a town road at the back end of it. And actually, it's kind of nice because there is a turnaround there. If somebody wanted to go up and turn around, they could actually turn around in that circle area, and then they could go right back to the original entrance back over here. So there's your turnaround right there. You provided no turning area for any vehicles down there. And like Roger says, that road that goes up around the back of Smith Center to Green Street, it's in terrible shape. It's all broken up. It's very narrow. Again, it's not the way to go.
Now going on a different train of thought. Obviously, you need to have two entries into the school for fire. So you need to have the Green Street entrance for fire trucks. And, but what would happen if you ended up having a gate, which could be knocked over by the fire trucks at the exit from the campus onto Green Street, which would basically prevent anybody from going that way? And to me, that ends up being, again, sort of the way that you can solve the problem without a whole lot of issue. I mean, is that a possibility? I, you know, it seems like there's a lot of issue with Green Street. And so somehow you have to reduce that traffic, whether it's by three speed bumps or perhaps even a gate, which the fire trucks could easily mow down.
And I think what would be good for us is if we had a concise option from the board. You know, it's sometimes tough to field, you know, four, five, or seven different ideas. I'm not saying, I think every idea has merit. I just, it's hard for us to know which direction to go to. We came here a month ago, had a direction from the board. We went that direction. We came back. And now there's four or five different directions, so...
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that for this plan, Green Street not to be used as a through road for regular traffic. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
How do you prevent that?
They're going to prevent that. He's asked for direction.
The question I would have is, a through road would mean it's our property at the end. A through road, it's a private drive. There's not a, we're a resident of Green Street as well, so that's our access to that road.
Correct.
It's not a through street.
Well, again, for this application, you are creating a traffic flow, and you can either discourage, not a through road, no through traffic. But again, if we don't leave this meeting and say, "We have discouraged through traffic on this road," you won't do anything to discourage through traffic on that road.
Well, John, I think we need to have a concern about terminology. To Peter's point, it's not strictly through traffic because it's not a public road. It would be traffic exiting Brewster Property onto Green Street.
And the attorney did make comment in the letter, "They cannot be discouraged from using or because they're an abutting property." But again, for this plan, they're taking a driveway that goes out onto Main Street that moves all their traffic. And they haven't given us a area where they're going to move that traffic to that doesn't go out onto South Main Street anymore.
We believe that the traffic will be directed to the new parking lot off of Estabrook Road.
You can't get there from here.
From Main Street. No, from Main Street. That most of the traffic coming onto campus will be parking in that main parking lot that we're proposing.
When they're going down to the games and going to the boathouse?
They may have to walk, or if there's still ADA access down to the boathouse and to the games if needed, if you need an accessible drop-off.
Just to be clear, what you're suggesting is that even those people who are going to the games and the boathouse will be encouraged to park in the new lot. Is that right?
That is correct.
So one of the things I did suggest at the last meeting, it's not new information, is why not connect the old stub of Academy Drive that's being cut off to Estabrook? Not where that house is a problem, but up where there's a 16 by 50-foot grass paved turnaround proposed. Could those be connected?
Right, and we just addressed that a few minutes ago, which was that there was not enough room, and that the grade doesn't promote.
Oh, no, no, not there.
No, not there? Oh, where are you looking?
This is where the new fire truck turnaround is being proposed.
Oh, I thought that's what we were talking about before. Yeah, I believe that came up at the last meeting, and we already kind of discussed that. That was not a preferred option to do.
It's not an option. Why?
I don't know that it was not an option. It's just not something that we had planned for, Vaughn. You know, the elevation there is pretty extreme, and it would be a lot of intervention and take up the entire, all the green space that we have between those two buildings would be taken up trying to accommodate that elevation change. And it would add significant cost to the project.
So I'm seeing that it's cross elevation. It's not through a bunch of lines of elevation change. It's where the grass paved turnaround is, if that were connected to Estabrook. There's not a big elevation change.
Yeah, the lines are next to each other. There's no line there. There's one.
I mean, just when you're standing there, there's a significant elevation change there, you know, as you go up to the left.
We're looking at the plan.
From Academy Drive side.
There is a single line very close to the Estabrook side. I would presume that the area that's currently planned for the grass paved turnaround is relatively level, that turnaround itself.
It's an area we're going to have to make level.
Ah, okay.
And by making it level, it's going to come up and it's going to be, sorry, it's going to be at a different elevation than, and we're going to have to make more grade change between the two roads to make that flat. And so the diagram that you're seeing, that is the turnaround.
What's going to be?
We will have to manipulate the grade there to make that flat.
I will say that if I am a driver and I was going to go on that route, I'm now going up. I'm going to have to take a very strong or sharp right-hand turn. I slow down, I go a little way, and then I have to turn left, perhaps go around the circle. And that would not be my option. I would continue going on Green Street if that was what I was doing because I go in a straight line, make a curve, and go to the main road.
Propose it.
And so my thinking is, and I'll go back to it again, is that that route to Green Street just needs to be made obnoxious. And, you know, they do that in trails, you know, there's a zigzag, so they put a whole lot of crap there so that people don't cut the switchback. And if you end up putting three speed bumps in there, no one's going to want to go that. The first time they'll do it, the next time they won't.
I'm certainly happy to agree to three speed bumps. I could probably up from one to three, no problem today.
And it's a reasonably cheap option, too. And, you know, it is true that Green Street is a public road, so it's not, you can't prevent people from being on it. But if you make that the route, the obnoxious option, people aren't going to go that way. I can't imagine, I used to drive, you know, the little vans you guys drive, little buses you drive. And going over speed bumps on those things is really a pain. I'm not going to drive that way.
I think the trade-off we would do, Peter, is we'd remove the speed bumps on the other side of Academy, especially the large one that's right next to Brown Field, to make it easier to go out of the main entrance. You know, so add and remove, so make the way that we want traffic to flow easier and make the way going out more difficult.
So here's a proposal. So come over here. So you go up this way. And then when you go past the building, there's one grade right there. Those are two-foot elevations, I suppose. And then you go right into Estabrook. So you go up, and then you go right over.
Right, so the location that you had sketched on there is almost exactly where we have existing parking. And we're trying to reduce the amount of vehicular traffic in the central quad area and kind of hold that zone as a green space in the center of campus for pedestrian traffic only. And that's kind of the primary reason we cut off Academy Drive and we're not making that connection is because of the safety of the students. Has been a continuous problem with students constantly, day in and day out, having to traverse a road in the middle of their campus. So we're trying to get the vehicular traffic out of the center of campus, and that puts it right smack in the middle of our quad.
I would say that that is sort of the same argument that was presented a little bit ago about Green Street and Pine Street both coming out onto Main Street, that it's a safety issue. And by putting in that through street, you're making a new safety issue if it goes right across the... across the middle of what you expect to be just pedestrians.
Correct, yeah. We're, we're improving the pedestrian walks and the pedestrian sidewalks that are going through center campus. And the idea is we're, we're cutting off cars from being in that central zone so that students are feeling safe. They have a continuous walking path from the academic buildings back to the dorms. They're on a safe campus. They're not having to deal with crosswalks and cars going back and forth or even the buses. Um, and so that's kind of our, kind of, uh, where we had landed with this project was to create the new parking lot adjacent to Main Street, funnel the majority of traffic to that and the, the existing visitors lot, which is over on Academy Drive over there. So we've got two main parking lots kind of up along Main Street that takes the vehicular traffic out of the core central campus.
If, if I recall correctly, the, when you introduced this, uh, project to us at the initial meeting, the initial goal or the main goal, I should say, was to make a walkable campus and remove traffic from the center of campus.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
So putting a through street there would defeat the purpose.
Right, yeah. So I, that's why I think we're a little hesitant in terms of like making a circuitous extra vehicular traffic, uh, path right through Fox and around. And we're just trying to kind of eliminate through traffic. We're still providing access for fire, um, to get to Grayson, to have a turnaround. We've talked to Chief Zadi, he's okay with the, with everything. Um, and again, pushing everything out to the perimeter and then we can kind of work on the Green Street and to kind of deter traffic in that, in that area. So we, we feel like we've met all of the goals of what, uh, we've been trying to set out for and what the planning board has asked of us to do, so.
All right, so we, we have a motion that's been made by John and seconded by Jane. Uh, is there any further discussion we should have before we vote on?
Okay, John, could you state your motion again?
So my motion was to, uh, to not allow Green Street to be a through exit or through exit per this plan. Meaning to ask the applicant to discourage with no through traffic signs put up behind the Smith Center to discourage no through traffic onto Green Street. And I would, and I'll let that one go first and then I'll make a second motion to create the other driveway area.
So I just wanted to make sure, John, that I understand your motion. Uh, your motion is to require that no through traffic signs be put up on the approach from, let's call it the Smith Center to the end of Green Street, is that correct?
From, from behind Smith Center to discourage traffic going up to Green Street, no through traffic.
Okay, as you stated, there was no through traffic from Brewster to Green Street, correct?
Can I ask how that's gonna be enforced?
We're asking the app, the applicant asked us to give us an option and I'm, and I'm putting this out there to discourage drivers from using Green Street. That will basically be, they, it will go to those people there, they'll have, they'll discourage their own people from using Green Street as a regular thoroughfare and basically they'll minimize the amount of traffic that will be going onto Green Street.
But, Peter, I don't believe that enforcement is part of John's motion. I think John's motion is to have signage erected, is that right?
Yes.
On Brewster's property.
Yes. Signage erected on Brewster's property.
Right. I think, I mean, and could we add the, the speed bumps just for an extra layer of?
Well, it's up to John if he wants to amend his motion.
I, I think if you, if you wanna add the speed bumps, that's fine. So you, so you're adding redundancy. You're adding, uh, no through traffic and you're adding, uh, three extra speed bumps.
So let, let's be clear because I wanna make sure that we have this procedurally correct. At the moment, the motion is just to erect no through traffic signs on Brewster's property. Is that right?
Right.
I'll stick with that one. Stick with that.
All right, so, motions been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's, any opposed? No? Okay, the motion passes.
Pete, Peter.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
A one, one nay vote?
Yeah, I don't think that solves the problem, so no.
I, I.
Two nay votes.
I, I wish the, the motion has changed to have three speed bumps and it is a relatively simple, easy solution. And I just don't, I, I don't think a, a sign that says no through traffic is gonna solve the problem. But if it passes, it's fine.
I also see that the people that live past the speed bumps have an, an issue of trying to get out and they're still gonna use Green Street because otherwise they gotta go over the speed bumps and go all the way through campus.
The, the speed bumps will not affect the residents because the speed bumps will not be on Green Street.
They're, they live down here.
They're all between Three Street and the Smith Center.
All the speed bumps that are being proposed would be between Green Street and the Smith Center.
Aren't there still buildings down past there on land?
There's a doing.
There are buildings there certainly, but they're not, they're all Brewster buildings.
Right, people live down there. So I'm saying all those people that live down here are gonna be on the other side of the speed bumps.
Yeah.
So they're gonna wanna go out Green Street so they don't have to go over the speed bumps to get over to Academy Drive. Bottom right-hand corner, way off the page, down there is where they live in.
Well, I, I guess it depends on where, exactly where the speed bumps are located. In theory, the speed bumps could be between those buildings and Green Street, not between the buildings and Smith Center.
If you, if you look at the plans, you end up finding that there are, uh, two walkways which come down to the road between Smith Center and Green Street. If you put a speed bump at each of the two walkways and also one near Green Street, that would be three places, obvious places, where trying to slow people down for pedestrian traffic. And to me, it ends up being something which is, it is not something where you're gonna have the, the campus police out there pulling people over, uh, you know, how do you enforce the rule? You know, somebody goes through there as a, you know, through traffic, there is no town person who can enforce it. Who is going to enforce that? It doesn't make any sense to me.
So then they're being discouraged from, from sending traffic in, out Green Street. So I'm gonna make my second motion to extend the, the, the road pass where the fire turn is, past Grayson to connect onto Est- Esterbrook Road with, with the design I just showed everybody. Is there a second?
Actually, it almost touches the driveway to that house anyway.
To, I have a, I have a process question if, if I'm okay. You know, what I was just mentioning to Andy, it feels like TRC right now, you know? So we came, two months ago for a TRC, zero of these things were, were brought to us. So, and we wanna show up here prepared. You know, we understand that there's a planning director turnover and getting the, the documents from guys 19 minutes before. We're willing to handle that. We can kind of work with that. But this is very TRC level that we're doing. We've already been through a TRC, we've been through a, a, a meeting where we came just to, to actually show us, which wasn't the public one, then another public meeting. Now we're here again, it's just, it's tough for us on our end to know what the right thing to do is to bring to the board. We wanna be here and be, you know, good neighbors to people on Green Street. We wanna be good residents of, of Wolfboro, but it's just a, it seems like the process is backwards from how we, we did it. And I just wanna, you know, it's, I can't answer for all these, all of these, these things while we're up here. That's.
And you shouldn't, I agree, you shouldn't have to do it live and I, I, I don't think it's appropriate to try to set the path for roads by motions from the planning board.
Yeah, we have, we have engineering studies that we have to do. We have all these things that we have to do once we get this information. And it's, it just is, from, from this side of the podium, I, I wanna work and be here to give you guys all the answers you want. It just is, is, is difficult. It's just putting us in a, it's, it's, it's a very difficult position to be in to try and answer for all these.
So one thing that has continually happened at every meeting that you've been to here is that Green Street is a problem. Increasing traffic to Green Street is a problem, has been a problem. It's up to you to solve it. We don't think you have. So bring us something that solves it.
Okay.
No through traffic and three speed bumps, I think would do a pretty good job of reducing the traffic. I can't imagine people going over three speed bumps in a distance of 50 yards.
I tend to agree with that.
Can, can we amend John's first motion to include?
You can make a motion.
Certainly, yeah, you can. So, so John made a second, the first motion he made was seconded and passed. The, he made a second motion which has not been seconded. And if somebody would like to make another motion, that's fine. And then we still need to get back to John's original point about the tree encroaching on the road. Certainly. If, if, if you could come up to the microphone?
It's not open.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right. I'm sorry, we have not opened to public comment, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait a minute.
We have to go through our procedures.
The, the public hearing was open last night.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, that's true. The public hearing was opened at the last, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, speak please. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is David Egan. I'm a relatively new resident to the town and property owner. Um, we received, along with many other people, a notice to be here tonight about other issues than what's happening at Brewster and that is consuming this meeting. It's now an hour and 20 minutes into the meeting and largely, this meeting has been a debate about maple trees and speed bumps. And I think it's of terrible use and abuse of our time. We're working people who need to be here, we're told to be here, encouraged to be here to get this resolved. And so I would highly recommend that you table this portion of the discussion, conduct the other business and then allow those of us who want to leave and hear and be heard to be heard. I, I have never experienced anything like this before.
Thank you.
To be honest and to be very respectful.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
My, my motion is that we continue this hearing and let Brewster solve this problem with Green Street. It's not solved.
Right, I'll second that.
We have agreed to put in a speed bump. We can do three speed bumps, we can do signs. I, we're happy to do that now.
Open up Clark Road.
I'm sorry?
Open up Clark Road.
So Vaughn has made a motion. Kathy seconded it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You should not continue this without.
Date specific.
A date certain.
A date certain.
Mm-hmm.
And you should probably re, listen to the abutters.
So, uh, before we continue this, let's give the abutters a chance to speak.
Certainly. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this?
So I, a Peter Batchelor, 10 Green Street. The last thing that was discussed, what was that? I didn't hear that. We got speed bumps, we've got, uh, no through street. Was there a third?
Yeah, there was a, there was a, there was a, there was a cut through from, from above Grayson over to Esterbrook.
Right, okay, that part of it, yeah. So I would agree with that. We, we need to create, because Esterbrook is being, the cut through's being taken out, so we now need to create another cut through. Because if you don't create another cut through, the no through street, which Brew, which Green Street is a no through street now. 25 years ago, it was a dead end. Brewster had a chain across that entrance. Then they said that they wanted to use it, so they put a yellow or a safety plastic chain across it. That didn't work. Too many calls, people burning popcorn in the dorms. So the police, the fire department have to come down and break that chain. So then it was left open. But I won't go through all that, but since 25 years, we've been fighting Brewster to curb their use of it. They said that putting in the Smith Center would not create more traffic, just like they're saying today, that all the traffic's gonna be parked up front. No one's gonna be back there and no one's gonna use it. But I can tell you that that's not true. It definitely will increase the traffic, absolutely. To what percent, I don't know. I like the idea of, it is a dangerous spot exiting Green Street as it is, so now this becomes the Brewster's lakeside loop. It's gonna increase traffic. So we have, the current traffic is caused by students, teachers, friends going to those dorms back there. They, they just do it. Uh, we got the athletic Smith Building, uh, we got the boathouse, we got all the athletic fields, we got the outdoor and indoor sporting events, we got deliveries of all kinds to the dorms, to residents, to Brewster's maintenance vans, uh, student travel vans, public use of Smith Center athletic facilities and all kinds of various events. Green Street, if you cut off one more piece of Brewster's traffic, Green Street is going to be used as their loop, the lakeside loop, and that's not fair. Uh, we submitted something to the board, using Green Street in this way, we believe will lower the property values of Green Street. And I know that's an item that we've, we've discussed before, that if you put a hockey rink behind a residence on Green Street, what happens? Does that decrease the value of that particular property? Al Pierce's property by putting a professional ice rink right behind it? Oh, absolutely, it hurts his value, absolutely. How about putting a dorm? Brewster put a student dorm, a student dorm on Green Street and it was approved and we fought it. We even got a lawyer to fight it, but we lost. And Brewster put a dorm on a residential street. They incorporated that lot into their master lot. And once they did that, three months later, we got a notice it was a dorm. So I went and spoke to the president at the time and said, "Hey, all right, you won. You got the dorm. We, we're not gonna be able to beat you, but could you not put that it's, uh, a, 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 a sign of a dorm? Can you take the, the Kennison sign down so that residents, it feels more like a street than it does a dorm?" And he said to me, and we both chuckled about this, he goes, "We're the big gorilla in town." And I said, "Yeah, you are. You are, because we've never been able to beat you." So I'm encouraged to hear that this board is taking this seriously because it is a traffic safety concern. It is a, a, a concern related to the value of Green Street. There's only three residents left. One side of the street, except for Al Pierce, is all owned by Brewster, so they're buying up the street. Maybe they'll someday own the whole street, then this is a new point, so to speak. But the issue is that it lowers the property values, what they're doing lowers the property values. It really damages the historic village rule character of Green Street. When I bought that house, I bought it because it was a dead-end street, in part. Everyone on that street was a family. We had one people, had seven kids, that people, three kids, this people, four kids. Kids were playing down the street, it was a dead-end street, it was a really cool street. That's what I bought. That's what I bought. And over the past 25 years, Brewster has abused it. They've, they've done certain things, like they have the no through street sign at the end of Brewster going onto Green Street. From Brewster going onto Green Street, they have a sign. But it's all broken, whatever, you know? So, but this is a major, yes.
Um, I think that the, the board is very seriously considering all the things you're talking about.
Okay.
Um, and I, you know, I think that, you know, we've gone back and forth on this and, and I, you know, your passion is evident.
Yep.
Your, your, your history is evident. But we've also had somebody talking about how we aren't moving on to the issues which he's been on. And so I, it, it might be nice if you made it shorter.
I can respect that and sorry, thank you for your patience, but for 25 years, think of that, 25 years, Brewster's destroyed that street with this traffic. And we finally have that point where we can change it. We finally have a point where we can win and get something done and the solution is to create another, it, it, you can still go Academy Drive right in front of the Smith Center and then exit and connect, like go behind, uh, the, the ice rink and connect to Esterbrook that way. Just go around Smith Center. You might not be able to cut through the other way, but if you go around Smith Center and then straight shot to Esterbrook going up where the old Catholic church was, that, right into that parking lot or over to Esterbrook, you have the loop. You have the internal loop. Then they can do whatever they want with signage. That's great. That would be, that would be a bonus to, to try to. That would be, that would be a bonus to try to get traffic away from Green Street. One other point, due to time. Future additional development. Brewster's gonna have a dorm at the end of Green Street. They have one now on Clark Road. They're gonna have another one just as big, if, if, it could be bigger or smaller, but it's gonna have another dorm right there at the end of Green Street. So, future development, and they may do more dorms down that area. They have a few dorms on the right side lakeside. They could do nine more dorms down there. So, we have to consider the future planning of what's gonna happen when Brewster really activates that area, because right now it's not really activated. It's busy, there's a lot of traffic, but Brewster's going to create more dorms there, and they're gonna use Green Street. So now put in the loop away from Green Street or onto Clark Road. Again, Green Street was a dead end, last point. Green Street was a dead end when I bought it. I bought a product from the town. I fought to protect that dead-end street. I fought to protect it. Brewster's abused it. They're gonna abuse it again. They're just going to. They even call it now Green Street Extension. So they added that. It wasn't Green Street Extension before, but it is now. So just know, you have to make the decision, they're gonna use Green Street. They're gonna buy Green Street. They're gonna buy every home on Green Street when it comes up for sale, and they're gonna use Green Street. The only way to stop them is to create another road and prevent it. So, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Alright, thank you. So we have a motion to continue this?
Yeah. I think it's not for us to figure out how to solve this problem. It's for them.
I understand. So, I believe Vaughn made the motion, Kathy seconded.
Yep.
We voted.
And we voted.
Voting. I can't hear you. Voting. We voted.
Before we continue it...
Do we have to do a date first?
We have to establish a date. That's right, before we'll continue it. So, I believe from Vaughn's message, we're asking Brewster to come up with a solution to the Green Street issue. Would you like to propose how long you might want to come back to us?
As soon as possible.
Alright, so June 17th, I believe, is the next meeting? Does that work?
I believe so.
So we'll continue this to June 17th at 7:00 PM here in the Great Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright, the next item on the agenda is Brian Knight Stanley, Cornelio Gutierrez, and Bu Isaac Bruce, four-lot subdivision on Pleasant Valley Road, tax map 245-021, case 2025-15, formal submission and public hearing.
So, I'm going to have to recuse myself, because last time this came up, somebody in the public accused me of having a conflict of interest, because I'm on the board of the camp school. So, I'm going to remove myself.
Very good. Thank you, Vaughn. So, Julie, can you sit in Vaughn's place?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, we're in mediation.
Jim, if you could introduce yourself and then introduce the project?
Certainly. So, my name is Jim Reins. I'm with Horizons Engineering, and I'm here representing Brian Stanley, Cornelio Gutierrez, and Beau Bruce in their request for a four-lot subdivision on Pleasant Valley Road. And we had also, had planned to do trees, and due to a notification issue, that's gonna be continued, but I just passed out pictures for you, so that you could sort of have a primer of what will be coming down the road. Because there are virtually no trees that will need to be removed, and the stone wall is not really much of a stone wall, as you'll see in that photograph. It's more like a few stones in a row, not a traditional stone wall. With regard to the subdivision itself, the property is, the original parcel is tax map 245, Lot 21. It's zoned general residential and wetland conservation. It's 67.16 acres with 1,257 feet of frontage on Pleasant Valley Road. One of the boundaries is Heath Brook here to the northeast, and that is a prime wetland, Wolfboro's prime wetland, PW10. So that has a 100-foot setback, which we have depicted on the plan. Lot 1 is the only lot that is less than five acres in size. It's 2.39 acres with 279.18 feet of road frontage. It has a form factor of 26.4, so it complies with the form factor. Lot 2 is 5.08 acres with 291.75 feet of frontage and a form factor of 20.9. Lot 3 is 8.09 acres with 485.25 feet of road frontage, and it has a form factor of 17.9. The remaining land, which is all of this, is exempt from the form factor. It is 51.6 acres, and it has 200.82 feet of road frontage. We applied for and received a state subdivision approval for Lot 1, and that was submitted as part of the package. We've had all of the wetland delineated, we've looked at all of the property in the three smaller lots, and we've delineated the wetland basically from here to the road and to Heath Brook on the remaining land. And so, when we did that, to demonstrate that there was more than adequate area for development when accounting for all of the setbacks. We are requesting a waiver from Section 174-9B1, which requires lot sizing by soil type, when the soil has to be determined by either high-intensity soil mapping or Order 1 soil mapping for the lot sizing. We wish to use the NRCS Web Soil Survey lot sizing. In this case, Pillsbury and Woodbridge is how it was mapped. Our rationale for that is that our test pits indicated in each test pit that it was consistent with Pillsbury and with Woodbridge soil, and that the lots on the A and B slope, which is what all of this land is, the minimum lot size, when you use the conversions in the zoning table, or in the subdivision table, is 68,000 square feet. And we exceed the minimum lot size from anywhere from 1.48 times the minimum lot size to 8.79 times the minimum lot size. So, we feel like that's not an unreasonable request, and that calculation actually excluded wetlands, which you can use in your minimum lot size. So, the lots will be served by onsite wells and onsite septic, and they will have driveways, as I said. Pleasant Valley Road is a scenic road, so removing any trees greater than 15 inches in circumference, and removing stone walls for the access is, requires public hearing. I provided those pictures so that you could see the drainage improvements that occurred a few years ago on the east side of Pleasant Valley Road eliminated virtually every tree in the right-of-way along this frontage. And so, and as I said, the stone wall is really not as much of a stone wall. And so, the photographs show where, there are two stakes where they wanna put the driveway for each of the three lots. There is an existing entrance on the remaining land, which I'm not a snowmobiler, but I understand this is a snowmobile trail, and it is existing, and there's no proposed change there. So that is it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board or the public has.
So the stone wall, is it your interpretation that when you sell the lots, or the lots are built on, and somebody puts a house on it, somebody could go and they could rebuild that wall, and they could build that wall? The designation for scenic road would only come if you are a municipality?
And I don't believe that's true. I think if the scenic road requirement is, if you're going to remove trees greater than 15 inches in circumference or dismantle a stone wall, that you have to have, the planning board has to issue an opinion on whether that's okay.
I believe that that only applies to municipalities and utility companies, and does not apply to a private landowner. But I would suggest you take a look at, I think it's 231-158.
Okay, I just know from past experience, a lawsuit that happened in this town that I was involved in, in North Wolfboro, where a client wanted to, where Stonemore Road was extended, it went to a Class 6, and they wanted to put, make that their driveway. And the scenic road issue was raised, and it was determined that we needed to go through, so we inventoried all the trees and the stone wall and showed what was going to be removed. And that was for an individual, not the municipality, so. If, I'm not here to debate it with you, if the board doesn't feel they need to, I'm on board with it.
I'm here to say I don't feel we need to.
Jim, is there a building on that number four, the remaining land, where the road goes through? Is there a building on that lot? I can't tell online.
There is no building on the lot. There are some storage, there are some storage containers. This is an existing road that I, like I said, I believe is a snowmobile trail. It was used for, it was a logging, it was a logging road.
And they have storage containers on it?
Yes, there's two containers right there.
So I have the RSA in front of me, and it says, "Upon a road being designated as a scenic road as provided in RSA 231-157, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work done with respect thereto by the state or municipality, or any action taken by any utility or other person acting to erect, install, or maintain poles, conduits, cables, wires, pipes, or other structures pursuant to RSA 231-159 through 189 shall not involve the cutting, damage, or removal of trees, or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls, or portions thereof, except with the prior written consent of the planning board." So, I guess it's up to the board to define any, by any utility or other person acting.
Why don't you read Section 4?
Section 4.
I can read it.
Do you wanna read it? Do you want me to read it? Section 4, designation of a road as a scenic road shall not affect the rights of any landowner with respect to work on his own property, except to the extent that trees have been acquired by the municipality as shade or ornamental trees pursuant to RSA 231-139 through 156, and except that RSA 472, colon, 6 limits the removal or alteration of boundary markers, including stone walls. Are the stone walls in the right-of-way or on the property?
The stone walls are the right-of-way. There was no layout that we found, so. Yeah, so the stone wall, such as it is, you know, is the property line.
Well, it would be ashamed if somebody wanted to rebuild it and make it look nicer in the future, so that's kind of where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I mean, I think it says if you're dismantling it, I don't think it says if you're building it.
Any other questions from the board? Lot 2 ends up being relatively small when you contemplate the amount of wetland on it. Is that gonna be a problem with construction?
No, if you look here, Peter, there's a pretty significant building area right here, and I think I put in my cover letter that it's around 80, it's over 80,000 square feet, as I believe. Lot 2 discounting all wetland soil, even though you can count it toward minimum lot size, we have 124,000 square feet of upland soil, 84,865 square feet of which is contiguous upland. So this is, you know, almost, it's a little over two acres, or no, almost two acres.
It looks to me that the access to the remaining land runs through a significant amount of wetlands.
Yes, it does.
But it's already a previously built road, right?
So, I mean, the wetland scientist said that basically, you know, this was a skid road that is now being, when it was logged, is being used as a snowmobile trail, and that the skid, the skidder basically created the wetlands where the road is by rutting it. You know, if, and when that is sold, you know, they're gonna have to come back to the board for a special use permit. It clearly, this is all upland right here, Roger. There's a small crossing here, this is upland, so the road could be shifted to only be a couple of small impact areas when, you know, that lot becomes developed.
What is the basis for the containers on the property?
I don't know, we just located them. I, you know, three gentlemen in the construction business purchased the property, and I'm not sure what's in them.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, with regard to the, I would make a motion to grant the waivers. Yes. No, we haven't opened the public meeting yet.
I'll second that.
So we have a second for the waivers, for the waiver, rather. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete. Peter seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, very good.
Okay, thank you.
And now we will open the public comments section. Would anybody from the public like to speak? Please come up to the microphone.
Give your name, please.
My name is Robert McInnis, and I live in the home that abuts this property and the project that they're looking to do. My wife, Jessica Hershey, her grandparents built the home on 143 Pleasant Valley Road. I can tell you for a fact that the skidder didn't create the wetlands in there. I've hunted that property for over 15 years. It has never been dry. The entire area where the storage containers are, that has always been wet. I don't know what the soil analysis was before it got filled in to create a driveway... I don't know what the soil analysis was before it got filled in to create a driveway area. May, June, July, August, all the way through December, it doesn't matter what month it was, you were soaking wet walking through any of that property back there. But how do you figure out how the soil was prior to filling in? And how can you fill in wetlands prior to an analysis? Kind of a weird spot, because I know for a fact that it's always been wet. The storage containers, where those all sit, it is dry, backfilled, everything going on. It, that entire area's always been wet. I know when Bruce Heald came in to log it, I lived there, that wasn't 20 years ago to create the wetlands. That was a few years ago. Always been wet. So how do you, how are you able to backfill and create it a dry area, and then go do your tests and say that it's no longer wetlands? How does that work?
I, I don't have an answer for you, and I don't know, I have not visited the site, so I can't speak to it directly.
Right. So is there a soil analysis prior to, after? Do the test wells go down deep enough? Is there a seasonal wetlands?
Maybe Jim can speak to that.
I think if you look at the plan, a lot of that is mapped as wetlands.
Right.
And I can tell you I made the mistake of trying to read the-
Concern is, like, where the snow machine trail goes through, that's always been a snow machine trail. There hasn't been a snow machine trail since the logging got done. It's always been that. But that's all been filled in within the past couple of years, since the property's been purchased, and that's one of the driveways.
Could you make sure to speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
So, my concern is basically just what I'm saying. It's, I don't understand how, if I can't build close enough to wetlands, how can you build, backfill it, and then go get your test samples?
Jim, would you like to comment on that? Please.
Yeah, so I didn't mean to imply that the snowmobile trail, you know, created wetland or anything. I'm just saying that the skitter trails, they're, they're rutted up, but the definition of wetland is a three-legged stool. It's soil color, it's available hydrology, and it is vegetation. A certified wetland scientist did this delineation. He didn't do it in, in the, you know, this fill area. He showed that, you know, this is wetland where, where that road runs, and all of this is all natural wetland, and yes, the lot is, the lot has wetland, but everywhere we did tests, we did it in natural ground. That's where all of our test pits were dug, and it's also, you know, where the wetland scientist used his hand dogger to core, to see the soil color and determine the hydrology.
So, Jim, you're saying, you're saying that there's no buildable space on the left, the only buildable space would be to the right in the bigger upland portion, correct?
Yeah, so-
None of that's buildable.
If you, if you look at the plan, this one's colored, so it, it helps to see, but this is, you know, this is upland, but it's, there's a pocket of wetland there, there's wetland here, there's wetland all here. This is, this little space is all upland. This is all upland here.
So right about it, where you were just at, that's about the only envelope that you could build in, right?
Yeah, in here, you could, yes, you could put a building in there. You would need to come before the planning board. If you wanted to improve a year-round driveway, you'd have to go to the Wetlands Bureau for wetlands crossings. You would have to come before the planning board for a special use permit. But you would not have an issue with, you know, getting a septic approval out in this area.
The wetlands were mapped by a soil scientist.
A certified wetland scientist, yes.
Yeah, that's-
Yep. Dan Coons did it from Ilix.
So could you point out the four lots for the public?
Yes, so this is Lot 1. This is Lot 2. This is Lot 3, and then this is the remaining land that is the fourth lot.
Okay. So they all have building envelopes?
They all have adequate building envelopes, yes. Lot 1, which is the smallest one, has almost no wetland on it, but it does have a, as you can see here, when you take into account the setback from wetland, it's, the building envelope is a little reduced.
And the rectangles on the second sheet here, that's area suitable for a septic system? Is that correct?
Yes, so on this map, I didn't render it, but these are 4,000 square foot areas that are suitable for sewage disposal. A septic system is nowhere near that large, but if we were going for state subdivision approval on these other lots, they, they require that you show a 4,000 square foot We also showed the well radii, you know, a potential well location. It doesn't have to be in the location we've shown, but at the state level, you have to show where you can put a 75-foot well radius when you're getting state subdivision approval. So we showed it on all of them.
So does that answer the questions for the gentleman who spoke?
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll close the public comment section.
Before we do that, we don't have anything from the Conservation Commission, do we?
Are you sure? Didn't we see that they signed off on the TRC?
She wasn't at TRC.
Roger, I think that you are correct.
It's a subdivision.
Sorry, yeah, you're right.
It's a subdivision.
Yeah, so, since it's subdivision, I guess the Conservation Comment may not be required?
No.
She didn't attend the TRC, that's why her comment's not in there. But it's a subdivision, and she doesn't typically, the Conservation Commission doesn't review subdivisions.
Given the proximity to a prime wetland, and one concern I have is that the access to the remaining land seems to require going through a significant amount of wetlands.
But Roger, there's already a road there.
There's a snowmobile trail there.
Uh huh.
And there's going to be something a lot more if they're going to develop the backlot.
Yeah, I think Roger's point is that-
And they'll have to come to the board to get it done.
But perhaps it's not appropriate to approve the subdivision if there's not adequate access.
Yes. If you hop those little islands, there's a lot of access, by moving that little trail.
Not the backlot, there isn't.
But there's, but there's no, in fact, request or anything to have housing back there. There's no suggestion as to where a septic system would be put, and so therefore, it seems to be the remaining land is to vacant at this time. So I don't think it really applies.
Well, I don't think we can approve a lot that doesn't have access.
That is access. Just maybe not for your pretty car, but there's access.
Yeah, we've, we've seen other, we've seen other, other sites, Roger, where they, where they get approvals for working in the wetland buffer, and they apply for permit, and if they apply for the permit and it's granted, then they get the access to go through there. I, I kind of think your, your areas that are prime wetland are pretty well delineated on the outskirts, and the ones, Lot 2 and Lot 3 are right on the front, so they're going to be on the road. You know, the Lot 1 is fully out of the water, and there's, then there's no wetland, and Lot 4 is such a huge lot, if, yeah, they can get across there, and there's all kinds of high land in the back.
The problem is getting there, because right now, this shows a road going through wetlands, not above or the wetlands itself.
At the same time, this is a subdivision showing three lots. It is not claiming that the remaining land is really a lot.
Yes, it is. It is a lot. It's absolutely a lot.
And it could just stay just like it is.
It may not be a developable lot.
It may just stay vacant. We can't, we can't say what tomorrow's going to happen, you know? The only way you could tell what was going to go on is if you bought it. Then you could tell what was going to go on it.
All right, so if I understand correctly, we don't have a definitive answer on the Scenic Road public hearing, and whether that's necessary for addressing the stone walls. Is that right?
No, I don't think, I don't think it's pertinent to whether or not somebody, they're going to get a driveway permit, so they're going to have to go through the process to get the driveway permit, and that would be addressed at that time, wouldn't it, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to get a building permit, they're going to have to get a driveway permit, you know, septic design. Our, our purpose was, at the TRC meeting, it was raised, I think it was raised by Barry, who's, you know, worked with the municipal electric department, and he had just gone through it, so, shame on me, I didn't read the statute, but I, from, based on my experience from before, I, I thought it needed to be, and, and-
So that was-
I'll defer to the board. If the board feels that, given the, the condition, I will, I will call it, of the wall that's there, there, there are no trees, so the trees are a non-issue, it's just the removal of the stones for the wall, so-
But you're not going to move them now, are you?
No, but, you know, they will at some point, and, and that would require a hearing if you, if the board thinks a hearing is necessary. If the board takes an action that says they don't think that's necessary, then, then it will just be a driveway permit process.
That may trigger that.
Right, but it, but it really, it's a, it's a separate issue from the subdivision application. It's just that we were trying to kill two birds with one stone, that's all.
I don't think the, I don't think that the walls are significant enough to even be called a wall. It's more like roadway debris from the building of the road. So I don't really think that we need to put them through that.
No, not now, it's too soon.
Right.
I mean, we're just talking about chunks of land.
But we could create the lots, and then give them a waiver on that. That's my opinion.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve case number 2025-15, a four-lot subdivision, tax map 245-021. And with the, what would you like to add in on that one? Steve?
That we waive the requirement for having the Scenic Road approval for modification for the driveways.
I don't, we, we can't waive it, but we can make a recommendation.
My opinion is it doesn't apply, but if you want to go through the process, it wouldn't upset me.
I, I mean, if the board makes a motion that they feel it doesn't apply in this instance, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that I don't believe the Scenic Road designation applies.
Well, do you want to add that to your original motion, which hasn't been seconded yet?
Yes.
Could you restate it, please?
I make a motion that we approve case number 2025-15, tax map Lot 245-021 for a four-lot subdivision, and not requiring a Scenic Road designation.
Anybody care to second?
I'll second.
Peter seconds.
I think it needs to be, we can't change the designation of the road, but we can make a statement that we don't believe it applies.
Can you just say "at this time"? It doesn't apply "at this time"? Would that help it?
I don't think that makes a difference.
No.
Would you like to add that to your motion, John? That Scenic Road does not apply? Peter, would you like to?
I'll second that.
Leanne, do you have some comment?
Oh, I have a lot of comments.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Roger opposes.
She's opposing.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, conditions to be met prior to the signing of plans would be, following plans as dated as approval incorporated into the approval, and there's Plan 1, well, there's a list of them. Plan 1, which is a plan of subdivision for Brian Night Stanley, Cornelio Gutierrez, Bo Isaac Bruce, Pleasant Valley Road, Wolfboro. And Plan 2 is the topographic plan of subdivision for the same. The applicant shall comply with New Hampshire RSA 231-158 effective designation on scenic roads, which we've said we don't believe applies.
So we can strike that?
So we can strike that, yes. Three, if granted, the applicant shall add a note to the final recorded plan indicating the approved waivers from the subdivision regulations. Four, the applicant shall submit a plan to the, final plan to the Office of Planning and Development for Review prior to recording. Five, final drawings, each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed by the land surveyor, engineer, or architect responsible for the site plans. The applicant shall submit the following. A, two sets of 24-inch by 36-inch black line final approved plans, one set of 11-inch by 17-inch final approved plan drawings, and lastly, C, one electronic version in PDF format. All of the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant, and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation and this notice herein shall generally be determining. Conditions to be met after final approval. Active and substantial development for this project is defined as, quote, "submittal of the final subdivision plan for review," unquote. These improvements must be started within 24 months of the planning board approval date in order to receive five years of vesting. Two, for in perpetuity vesting purposes under RSA 674-39, quote, "substantial completion," unquote, for this project is defined as, quote, "recording of the town staff-reviewed final subdivision plan," unquote. Three, the applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees at the Carroll County Register of Deed. And lastly, four, the following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA 677-15. Any persons aggrieved by any decision of the planning board may appeal the decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days after the date upon which the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676-5, Roman numeral 3, within 30 days following the date the board made this decision. Findings of fact. Would somebody like to start us off on findings of fact? Well, we find that the subdivision complies with the Wolfboro ordinances for subdivision. Go ahead.
The lots conform to the frontage and lot size requirements of the ordinance. In fact, they exceed it. That wetlands have been mapped and show, demonstrate the lots are buildable, that there are no roads in connection with the development that takes into account the setback from a prime wetland, and how'd they do? that takes into account the setback from a prime wetland, and how'd they do?
Better than me. Thank you. All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Denise and Paul Fleischner, special use permit, construction shed within the wetland buffer, 7 Fawnhaven Drive, tax map 231-031, case 2025-16, formal submission, public hearing.
Hi, I'm Peter Cooperdock. I'm representing the Fleischners for a special use permit to enable them to build a, a 12 by 16 shed on their property within the wetland buffer zone. This property got a special use permit in 2017 to construct the existing building that's on the property. The original intent was for their building to have a, uh, a garage under, which would allow them to have storage. For some unknown reason, the, uh, building inspector at the time wouldn't allow a drive-under garage, so they were left without that storage area, and they now find them, themselves in need of storage. So, um, they have proposed, the origi, the original, um, the original special use permit did, did grant a approval for not only the building that's shown there, but also an eight-foot by 20-foot deck on the rear side that was never built. Uh, this proposed shed is behind, in that location. The, uh, most recent, uh, building inspector, uh, through consultation, just said that he preferred to have the building five feet off the exist, the proposed shed be at least five feet off the, the, uh, existing building, and that's what's shown there. The, basically, the, uh, the 12 by 16 is basically the same size as the 8 by 20 that was originally proposed. Uh, it would have, be built on a pervious, uh, stone pad that would have drip line trenches surrounding the, uh, the shed. It would, um, have, um, limited disturbance of the existing property. It has, it's basically in the lawn area proposed, no, no additional impact to the vegetation surrounding the wetland. There's gonna be a minimum fif- 15-foot, uh, setback to the wetland at its closest point, 18 at another corner, uh, 22 from another side. So there's, uh, a minimal amount of im- impact, 76 square feet of, uh, or 211 square feet of impervious impact, 76 square feet of pervious impact, the surrounding drip line trench, and then temporary impact surrounding the, uh, the stone pad would be an elevated flattened area with a little stone cobble, uh, perimeter around it to level the site. The, uh, the shed is proposed to be, um, brought onsite on a, uh, in, in pallet form and constructed onsite. It would, wouldn't be brought in, fully constructed, it's, it's built in, onsite in panels. So there'd be minimal impact during the construction process. That, uh, the site was, was approved, um, eight years ago to put the building in. The, uh, remaining wetland around the property has stayed unimpacted by the, uh, current owners, and, um, it's a wooded lot, except for where the house is and a perimeter lawn.
Thank you. Um, I'd also like to make note that there was a site visit earlier this evening, uh, was attended by myself, Roger Murray, Steve Webster, and John Thurston. Any questions or comments from the board to Mr. Cooperdock?
Under the Wolfboro planning and zoning ordinance, there needs to be a 20-foot setback between buildings, so I think you're ne, gonna need to consider attaching the shed to the house. Otherwise, it's probably infeasible to build it. Or you can get, oh, you can get a variance.
Right.
Which I realize is not your bailiwick.
Right, that is what, uh, you know, Jason Durance had encouraged us to do, keep it five feet off. He, he, yeah. I am aware of the 20-foot setback. He said, "Well, you don't need a building permit for, for this size shed, so it shouldn't come up." I'm not really sure how to respond to that. Yeah, 20-foot setback would make, be more, would, would impact, much more of an impact on this property.
And why not attach it to the house?
Well, the roof runoff on a shed, it's got a peak roof. It would have to be a shed roof, then it would have to be a different design. I guess that's an idea, but that, that was, uh, there is, there is the HVAC, that's that little extended roof that's sticking out the back there, that's, that's the HVAC unit. But, you know, we could kitty-corner it around that, I suppose, if that was the, uh, the, the board's, um, preference.
Are there any windows on that side of the building? Or is that, I didn't, I wasn't there today. Where's that basement?
I can't, I can't recall. I can't remember.
There are no windows, certainly, uh, at a height that wouldn't interfere with the shed.
Yeah, the shed isn't really a shed, it's more of an overhang protecting the condensing unit that's...
No, no, we're talking about the shed he's proposing to build.
The proposed shed, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
What about encroachment onto the buffer? Well, you have a buffer from the wetland that we've gotta maintain here?
Well, that, that's what I'm here for, is to get relief from the, from the wetland setback, a buffer of, uh, 25, or 30 feet for a building. We're proposing 15 feet for this. Obviously, if we attach the, uh, the shed to the building, it would be a different shed than they proposed to, to purchase, um, it would increase the, uh, the setback.
Would you be out of the, would it be enough to get out of it?
It would be, no, there's no, no place on this, on, on, on the plan, you know, it, it shows what the building envelope, it, there's a, the dark hatched lines are the, uh, buildable area. It would, it would go into that a little bit, but it would not be, um, out of the wetland buffer, it would not be out of the, um, building setback area. We, I'd still need to be here. Yeah.
I'm trying.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's fine.
A comment from the, uh, from Lenore Conservation, uh, was asking, "Does it really need to be five feet away? Would you prefer to have it be attached?"
Yeah.
We could certainly attach it, we were going in the direction of the building, Inspector, and...
I could just see water and snow, you know? Drifting in there and, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
The ice, that wouldn't be good.
If you put it the same way that the pitch of the roof is, then it, the shed could have the same angles as the roof.
Well, probably if you attach it, you'd just have a shed roof, just one angle coming right down, single shed roof. I don't know what, what is valuable out there for a shed, but it seems like you could find something that would, or be built, then you'd build it onsite, at the worst.
Right.
Right? You just...
It's unfortunate that, you know, Roger comes up with the information that the shed is either 20 feet...
I know, what a pain in the butt this guy is, huh? He's horrifying.
If, if it's attached to the house, it also increases the distance of the wetland from the corners.
It does, it does. Undoubtedly, yeah.
I don't know if that puts you out of the setback area.
It does not. No, we'd still, you know, the numbers would be different, the numbers would be less, but, except for the setback distance, the amount of impact would, would change, but I don't know if you'd feel comfortable with, with amending a proposal at this meeting, which would certainly make me happy, but...
I don't see any other place to put it.
Well, I would be, I would be amendable to, uh, to, to allow the shed to be attached to the building if, uh, if you were still inside that footprint that you came to us tonight.
It would still be a 12 by 16.
So you would have the allowance to be in the setback area.
Right.
And you, the building would just have to be onto the, hooked to the, hooked to the building. The shed would have to be hooked to the building. That way you could move forward.
That'd be, that'd be fine, yeah.
All right, so would we need then a submission of a revised plan before we take action?
No, because he's still within the area, he's ax, asking for a, an amount, and he would be inside that amount of areas, yeah, yeah. The, the amount of impact would be less.
No, I understand the, the impact would be less, it's, uh, better for the wetlands, but do we wanna have, uh, a proper drawing for the shed?
As and as built afterwards.
Well, I could certainly, uh, you know, if you approved the concept tonight before you signed it, because you have to sign it, right? That I provide a, a plan that corresponds to what you approved. That would be, that would be fine. And the numbers accordingly.
All right, does anybody wanna make a motion to accept the application as complete?
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, we'll open the public comment section. I'm sorry?
I'm not sitting in anymore. Steve came back.
Uh, would anybody from the public like to speak to this application? All right, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, amend the plans so that the 12 by 16 structure is adjacent to the house, and, uh, therefore approve the plans.
Would you say "attached to the house" or "adjacent"?
Attached.
Attached to the house.
All right, so, uh, Peter, could I also add the, uh, staff recommendations for conditions?
Sure.
Uh, could, could I make a comment on one of those staff recommendations? Because I don't work with, uh, 24 by 36 sheets. I, I work with, uh, 22 by 34. Could I, could I, um, submit those? That's, that's the only, uh, thing that I would like, just to be accurate.
Leanne, do you see any issue with that? All right. So, uh, if I could add, John, to your motion, uh, that the following plan is amended to the date of approval, is hereby incorporated into this approval. Plan One, special use permit for Denise and Paul Fleischner, 7 Fawnhaven Drive, Wolfboro, tax map 231 lot 31, prepared by Peter Cooperdock. Uh, number two, the applicant shall comply...
We're not approving that plan, though.
Oh, that's true, yes.
To be amended.
So the, the...
We're not really amending the plan, we're approving, well, if we vote to approve it, we're approving a revised plan.
Yeah.
Showing the, um, shed attached to the house.
All right, so we will have a revised plan showing the shed attached to the house with the shed roof being incorporated into this approval as described. Uh, the applicant shall comply with the pre-construction siltation and erosion control methods, measures, and construction sequence as shown on the revised plan. An inspection by the town shall be required of siltation devices prior to construction. Final drawings, each individual sheet and every set of drawings must include a certified wetland scientist stamp and LLS stamp. A final version of the narrative letter shall include a certified wetland scientist stamp. The applicant shall submit two sets of 22 by 34 black line approved plans, one set of 11 by 17 final approved plan drawings, and one electronic version in PDF format. The applicant shall be responsible for payment of all report, recording fees, and all the documentation in the application package by the applicant, submitted in the application package by the applicant, and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation and this notice herein shall generally be determining. The applicant shall be required to monument the edge of wetlands in compliance with Section 175-9 dot 1 Wetlands Boundary Monumentation. This includes, wetlands shall be delineated by a state of New Hampshire certified wetland scientist. Markers shall be placed at 50-foot intervals along the total wetland boundary following its general contour. Care shall be taken to ensure that the markers are placed with the appropriate spacing at points closest to any proposed or existing structure located on the property. The cost shall be borne by the applicant, developer, or their successors in interest. The applicant shall be responsible for submitting a letter of certification of the posting to the code enforcement office prior to issuance of any building permit. The special use permit is valid for the period of one year from the date of issue per zoning section 175, 186(c). The following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA 677:15, and a grieve party may appeal this decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days of the date of the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676:5, Roman numeral three, within 30 days of the date the board made this decision. Okay, motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Do we need findings of fact?
Yes, I imagine that we do. Roger, would you like to lead us on findings of fact? You've got a talent for it.
I'm not sure I show the talent.
Cat?
I'm not sitting on this one.
Well, that's true, yes, because you're, all right.
On a previous special use permit application, the findings of fact was that the applicant has met the criteria for the special use permit expressed in 175-10a and 175-10-point-1, and the proposal will have a less detrimental impact on the wetlands. The wetland, the Wolfboro Conservation Commission has reviewed the application and noted no objection to the proposal.
Thank you, Leanne.
Lovely.
Well-written.
All right, next item on the agenda is D&amp;M Homes LLC Special Use Permit, construction patio within wetland buffer, 9 Christopher Court, tax map 143-017, case 2025-17.
Yes, I'm back. I, um, did the original design for this, um, property, the septic design that's there. The hu, the house was built, um, in compliance with the 30-foot, um, building setback requirements. Upon construction, there's interest in, um, having some outdoor space, and so we proposed a pervious patio to be pervious, so to be no increase in, uh, in, uh, stormwater drainage on the property. The, um, the perimeter, the limits of the, uh, wetland are gonna be marked with a row of arborvitae trees to make sure there's no unintended impact to the, uh, to the wetland, which there hasn't been through the construction process. Um, uh, the, there will also be a deck because of the height coming down from the building, a three or four feet drop. There's a deck outside the sliding doors in the back of the house, plus a, a few steps. So there is a, uh, a 12-square-foot, uh, impervious impact inside the 30-foot, uh, setback area, which is a little nip of the deck and the steps. Uh, 289, uh, square feet of pervious, um, patio within the 30-foot setback area, and temporary impact of 740 square feet, um, most of which is the planting of the arborvitae trees. Uh, the interest is to plant those arborvitae five foot on center, about 20 of them in, in total. This is a lot that was created in 1987, um, and approved by this planning board as a building lot for Joe Santora.
What is the nature of the permeus, permeable surface, and what is going to be done to maintain that it remains permeable?
Okay, there's a cross-section on the plan that shows how a, a pervious patio is constructed with a, uh, uh, 12 inches of crushed stone, uh, surrounded by, filter fabric is laid down, crushed stone is put, 12 inches of crushed stone is placed, um, layer of fil-... crushed stone is put, 12 inches of crushed stone is placed, layer of filter fabric is placed above that, six inches of pea stone with pavers. The intent is that the homeowner would be interested in maintaining by leaf blowing any debris that would accumulate on the-
So how does the water get down through these pavers?
Well, there's spaces between the pavers-
And-
-filled with pea stone, yeah.
Filled with pea stone?
Yes.
And 10 years from now, is that going to be still looking like pea stone or is it going to be growing with grass and things like that to make it so that water doesn't go down through?
I have no idea. I cannot predict the future. The intent is that it would remain free for anybody that would want to have a patio that they'd want it to be maintained. It's, I can't, I can't speak for the future like that, but, you know, like, like with anything, how can you know how people are going to treat their property? I would hope in a location like this, they would treat it well.
Well, at the same time, I think there's, in, in other instances, when we've approved permeable surfaces, there has been a requirement to have it looked in to see whether it still remains permeable or not.
By whom? Is that what, be it a town responsibility to watch that?
I, I don't know exactly, I can't remember exactly who, who does that, whether it's the building inspector or enforcement officer.
If, if that is the so desire of the planning board to require that, I-
So the, the maintenance of the permeable pavers is listed on the drawing here-
Yeah.
But monitoring it is a separate issue, Peter, as you've pointed out.
I would hope that people would maintain their property. I have a lot of things I hope for. Not all come true, I'm sorry to say.
All right, so again, there was a site visit earlier this evening with Roger Murray, John Thurston, Steve Webster and myself. One of the things that was observed was some of the grading behind the building that appeared to be in the buffer zone, the wetlands buffer zone. And then you have on the plan the proposed arborvitae, but we noticed that they were already installed.
I just found that out today, yes. Tonight, yes. The intent is to get, guess to, now that they're there, allow them to stay, yes, which I think is a very nice idea on this, the-
So one of the concerns that was raised is in Wolford ordinances, section 175 dash seven, with regard to buffers and setback from the wetlands. 175 seven A buffers reads paragraph one, "The minimum wetlands buffer, which is more restrictive than a setback, shall consist of undisturbed land in accordance with the following requirements. The only exception would be for driveway crossings. Two, wetlands buffer the land area for the edge of delineated wetlands to the buffer line, consisting of ungraded and undisturbed land. The wetlands buffer shall consist of ungraded and undisturbed land and no building structures or improved land unless otherwise allowed by this overlay district." So we noticed that there was certainly grading and improved land within that buffer. That was a concern for us.
That, so I hear. Yes, that is, that is an interesting point because, you know, this is, this is an approved subdivision lot from 1980s, pre, pre these regulations, correct? This was, had an approved septic system design, which, and a building was built with, you know, inspections by the, by the building inspector and no concern was raised about that. So it, it comes to my mind that, well, when, when does this, you know, okay, so there's a building setback, very clear, 30 feet, no, no questions. When does the setback buffer apply to these situations? Is it when you're, we're here in a, in a special use permit process that we need to comply with that? Because it never comes up during a normal building permit process. So we're kind of in a quandary of what is the order of events? Because there's other things that are allowed in here. So, you know, permitting uses, you know, you can do agriculture in, in that buffer zone without any, that's a permitted use.
So let's, let's just, let's, I-
I would like to finish here. You know, there are forestry management practices that can take. You can do agriculture in that wetland buffer. So where is, when is the time when we have to worry about that 25-foot setback?
As soon as you set foot on the property.
That is apparently one opinion, yes. It is, it, it's not been enforced, apparently.
So, so when you, so when you do a soil survey, you delineated the wetland setback?
Yes.
So you're, you're licensed and with that license, you should be up on the rules and the ordinances of the town.
I am.
And, and this, this is the ordinance of the town and this, this house that you just built-
Well, I didn't build it.
Well, you're, you're the agent. It says on, it says on the cover, you're the agent, right here, so-
I'm the agent for the special use permit process.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not trying to be, you know, we're just, we're just trying to be consistent with all the other neighbors that, that this was a raw piece of land, this, this was a pre-existing subdivision, but when you go to build a home on this subdivision lot, you need to follow the most restrictive and current ordinance and the ordinance that Doug just read applies to your site. And, and I'll add, 3B buffer required for all other wetlands, perennial and intermittent streams and poorly drained soils at 25 feet. So the, the, the buffer setback is what Doug just read off, shall consist of undisturbed land in accordance with the following requirements. The only exception would be for driveway crossing. We, we actually looked at another property tonight, which was down the street, where we saw the boulders were right up next to the house where the buffer, the wetland buffer was maintained and protected. So the example that, that we saw tonight of all the material, all the way up, right up to the wetland buffer ribbons, the blue ribbons-
The wetland delineation lot.
Yes.
The limits of wetland.
Yes. We, you were all the way up to the limit of, of the delineation. So you, you were in the, you were 25 feet in with ground that was three feet tall, which was rocks and soil and, and it wasn't forestry, it wasn't gardening, and it, I mean, and you didn't, if you wanted that, you would have had to come get a, a conditional use permit, I do believe, if, if that was the case, correct? Special use.
Well, this is a special use permit, I, yeah.
For that, for that filling of that wetland area, so-
Well, the, the wetland wasn't filled. No wetland was filled. The wetland buffer was impacted.
Right.
I don't know whether it was filled or not. I haven't gone and made a study of the area.
There was no, nothing evident to me, at least this evening, when we looked, that the wetland was filled. No, what we're discussing is the disturbance of the ground in the buffer.
Okay, and it's, and it's, okay, I've been doing this since the inception of these things and these, this issue has never come up before. And I find that interesting that it comes up now.
Well, maybe, maybe the other people weren't looking after the town's ordinance. So we were, and they may not have done a site visit. So we were, we were at the site and we, we saw what happened. Unfortunately, you know, maybe the, the person building the house didn't get good guidance and that's-
Well, that would, that would seem, if, 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 this, this is the confusion because the building inspectors for the last 20 years have never brought this up as a concern. Okay, so how is a builder supposed to respond except to go in the guidance of the building inspector? And if the building inspector has had no concern, it isn't just the last one, there's been, been a series for a while. And, and to me, you know, you can look at the wording of this ordinance and, and agree with what you say there. You can also look at the wording of this ordinance and wonder that perhaps it's not as applicable unless we go through this special use permit, permitting process because it's under the permitting, special use permit ordinance. So, so I, I feel like there is an option, possibility of some confusion about what, how this is supposed to be followed.
What prompted you to come in with this application for the patio?
My client asked me to. This is the, my, the client, Sean Dunn from the-
So he basically hired you to come in and?
Yes, he did. He, you know, I did the original septic design for Joe Santora. We worked on getting a, a building that complied with the, the subdivision covenants. And, you know, Sean bought the lot and built, built the house, going through the, the building permit process, you know, cleared the land.
So for clarity, this, the septic's on the gable end on the other side of the house. There's no, there's no septic on the backside of the, of the building.
I didn't, I didn't say there were. I, I just said I did the septic design.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I was just, just for clarification, just so everybody understands that there's no septic in the back that caused that area to get raised up.
Right.
The septic is on the other side of the house.
Uh-
Sure.
Yeah.
You have to come out.
Can you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
On the plan-
You gotta go right to the microphone.
Sorry. On the plan, it shows the house itself.
Could you please introduce yourself first?
I'm sorry?
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm Sean Dunn, D&amp;M Homes.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of the property. So on the back of the house, when we, when we did it, before we put the foundation, we dug the hole and all the fill and area went into this particular area that was right there. And when Jason came out and did the inspection on it, he noted that was there and he looked and he saw the siltation fence in the back where we had for the, for the wetlands and measured off to make sure we were at the proper thing. And he said that we needed to come for a special use permit if we wanted to do anything bigger than a four-foot deck off the back of the house, but you saw the footage that were there. The buyers that want to buy the house want to do a patio. So talking to Peter, we had to, he said the best thing to do is a pervious patio because it's all what did the wetlands buffer. That's everything that I've known about it all is that I needed it for that and then we needed to put up the arborvitae in the back. That, that's all we have known to be-
So, so it might have been a miscalculation to pile that dirt in that area initially because-
So where else would the dirt go?
In the back of a dump truck. Or another location, not in the wetland buffer.
So I, I would-
I would think that it, it's near an impossibility, but okay.
So I, I think certainly there's some uncertainty here with regard to both procedure and interpretation, and I would suggest that we continue this application until we get some guidance from our planner.
Or our legal counsel and our planner.
Yeah, perhaps both, perhaps both. Does anybody have any thoughts about that?
I'll second that.
Oh, I didn't make a motion yet, but thank you.
Well, I'm also going to suggest that, you know, this, the idea that you're going to maintain these permeable pavers, it, it may work for this owner. If the owner ends up selling, the next person may not even have any idea what they're doing. And so therefore, it, it is permeable pavers in a, a space which is associated with wetlands and it is different from, say, the parking lot at Huggins Hospital, which is a long way from that, and they also have then drainage systems to move the water away. And I, you know, I have seen pavers and over a period of time, they all of a sudden become impervious, the whole thing. So I, you know, I don't know that this is a, a plan which works in perpetuity, which in fact we're granting if, if it is, if it goes through.
And I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing to July 1st at 7:00 PM here in the Great Hall so that will give us an opportunity to get some counsel on this issue.
I'll second that.
Can I speak to that? I will not own the property on July 1st. So at this point, I'll probably just withdraw and take the denial.
So we still have, we, we, the reason that we're continuing this is because we, we as a board have seen something that violates potentially our ordinance and we need to evaluate our stance as a town to see what, what we need to do moving forward.
Well, then my stance would be that the building inspector should have said something when it was happening at the time, but not bring it up now when it's all completed.
Well, we're not the building inspector. If the building-
The building inspector works with his town. He was there, he's been in, almost in every single inspection. He was there when we were backfilling, he was there when the, when the, when the material was all there. Never once was it brought up. We didn't disturb any of the wetlands. We're 30 feet away. This 25, uh, buffer was just brought up just today and you were there.
It's been in ordinance and it was on the plans originally.
The plans were submitted to the town for approval and we got the approval from the town.
Sure, with the buffer.
With no-
With the buffer.
Where, where, where is that on the permit? It was never expressed and, and the building inspector was out there looking at it all and he took his tape measure and measured it all. He did every bit of it. It was all sitting right there. Nothing's ever been hidden on any time.
I, I took a look at the site plan and it appears that the structure meets the setback.
Right.
So didn't have any dimensions on it, but looking at the configuration of the house and the plan, it appears that it's conforming and it's in the right spot. Perhaps you-
So the-
It should be good to at least do the deck.
Well, the, the concern isn't the building or even the deck. The concern is the work that's taken place or has taken place in the buffer.
Conservation looked at it, she didn't have a problem with it.
That's true.
Well, I don't think she, I don't think she went to the site to, to walk the site or to look at the, so-
She, she did like the idea of the arborvitae and so forth at TRC, so.
And it's on the plan, it shows the grass going right up into the, up into the wetlands area with the arborvitae there and all of that grass, it's on the plan that's been permitted that she looked at and saw.
Yeah, it, it does show the arborvitae, it does show the arborvitae within the buffer zone.
Right. And then it, I'm assuming on the plan right here is all the grass area that would be in it. So when she saw it, she, that's the plan that she had saw.
I think there's an issue if the building inspector came out and inspected, made repeated inspections and never brought this up, to now go back and tell the applicant that, you have to remove it all, I, that's-
But, but the building inspector was inspecting the building. He wasn't-
I digress because he measured from the tree to the corner to make sure it was at the 30 feet before he let me backfill or put the concrete into the foundation.
So he was-
He measured all of that.
So he was measuring the building. He wasn't, he wasn't, he-
But at that time, all that fill was sitting on top of all that area.
Yeah, the, the building inspector did have opportunity to view that.
Right.
That may not have been the reason he was there, but certainly he had opportunity to raise the issue at the time if he felt it was a, a problem.
Well, I don't know-
He's got a full set of plans.
I, I don't know if that's the purview of the building inspector.
Well, I think it is and he used to go out and make sure when he puts up a building it meets the setbacks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, maybe we need to clarify that and that's why we need find, to find guidance. Again, we're, we can't move on here. We, we've made, the motion has been made and seconded.
Well, what is before us is the patio and the stairs down to it.
I'm sorry?
The issue before, what's before us tonight is the patio and the steps down to it.
Right.
Because I'd like to withdraw my motion. Yep. Hasn't been voted on, so I'd like to withdraw my motion. I'll replace it with a motion that we approve. I'm sorry, we haven't had public hearing yet, have we?
And you haven't accepted it.
We haven't accepted it, that's true, yes.
Is it okay if I sit down? Have Peter come back up?
Certainly. I'll make a motion that we accept this application as complete. Would anybody like to second it?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good. All right, let's open this for a public hearing, for a public comment. Would anybody like to speak to this? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment section. Anybody like to make a motion?
So discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
So again, we, we, we have a wetland buffer that's been filled in with three feet of material all the way up to the buffer line. It's 25 feet of filled area. If if we don't step back and evaluate what has happened here, what are we as a board going to say to all the other people out there that, and I feel for you, sir, it's, it's, but our job is to make sure that when we go to a site visit and we look at the conditions on the site, that they meet the criteria of the ordinance. And when we can see clearly that the, the wetland buffer has been filled in, it's, it's, it's not our fault. It's not, to me, the building inspector's fault because he's inspecting the building. He's not inspecting the grounds and the soil. The, and, and to that point, our job is to look at the wetlands. That's what, that's what our job is. And so, again, I, I was in, under the impression to approve the, the pervious patio area, but if we approve the pervious patio area and then it, it gets approved, then what happens to the filled area? That's the problem. So we need, again, I, I, I'm, I'm standing here with the rest of my board saying, look, we, we have an ordinance, we have criteria. Everybody else is out there watching us on TV saying, it's unfortunate that the, that the gentleman piled the dirt in that area. It seriously is. But that's not our problem. Our problem is to.
I believe it is your problem because the building inspector was there.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
I, I do believe that it's your problem because the building inspector was there. You're saying that it's not the building inspector's responsibility, but the building inspector's responsibility is to make sure your setbacks and zoning is all correct. We're there. I pulled it off. They had my permit for 95 days before they, I received it back. There was no mention of it, nothing there. He saw every bit of it. He saw the hole before the foundation went in, inspected the footings, inspected the foundation, measured off before he poured the concrete. Piles of dirt all sitting right over there. Walked through them, moved it all, never had an issue with any of it. He says, you're within your 30 feet, you're all set. Said I can only do a four-foot porch. You saw the three posts that I put out there to keep that four-foot porch because if I get denied here today, the steps can only go down to the side. They can't go down into the back. Never once did he say that I couldn't landscape and put grass out in the backyard on top of that. Never once did he mention any of that. You know, he was there to look at it all. I, I, I disagree that it's, it's the town's issue, not my issue. I disagree, sorry, sir.
I would, I would like to make another comment if I could, it's like, you know.
Peter, get closer.
I'm getting closer.
The, the, the purpose of the ordinance, what, what is the purpose of the ordinance? It's, it's to protect the wetlands.
Certainly.
It's to maintain the integrity of the wetlands. And every time I've come in here for a special use permit, there's been a maintained of some limited amount of buffer against the wetlands to protect them. This proposal has, has put a line of arborvitae trees, you know, to the skeptic, it might be, well, the owner could come and cut them all down, you know? Yeah, could be. I don't know, you know, what's the enforcement on that? But the point is that even with this impact that's happened to this buffer, the wetlands have been protected. There has been no impact to the wetlands. You were there. You, you saw it before you saw that, you know, the integrity of the wetlands has been maintained. Was it followed the letter of the law, you know, with the vagueness that there may be perceived in, in that, in the ordinance and where it applies and all of that? That point is, the integrity of the wetland has been maintained and the fact that the arborvitae are there, have been planted there, is to maintain the integrity of that wetland. Two-thirds to three-quarters of this lot are wetland and are going to stay that way forever. And that's a wonderful thing. And like, it's be important to realize that under a difficult lot, you know, the wetlands have been protected. Were some techniques used that were inappropriate? You know, that's something we can work on into the future to try to make sure something like this doesn't happen again. But there's been this vagueness that is concerning, so.
So Peter, I would say that, yes, the vagueness is concerning, but with regard to protecting the wetlands, I'd argue that the purpose of the buffer is to protect the wetlands.
I, I totally agree.
And in, in this case, because of the added soil and the grading, so for example, as you said, we can't predict the future, but if this, if the future homeowner has a lawn there and then they put down fertilizer, then it's possibility that phosphorus or other minerals or elements could then drain down into the wetlands, which was not originally intended. That was the purpose of the buffer.
Which is on every area around a wetland, whether it's in this town or any other town. Yes, can we work together to come up with a better way going forward for this? But I, I think, you know, this, this process has shown a, a, a quirk in the system that we maybe should.
A weakness, perhaps.
Yes, a weakness. And it's, you know, no fault to Mr. Dunn here to have, have this, you know, thrown on him when he has complied in every way that he was aware of on this, in this case.
I think the ordinance is absolutely clear that you need a 25-foot wetland buffer that is a no-touch zone and you need a 30-foot setback where grading is, an alteration is allowed, but no structure. However, there is a doctrine of municipal stoppall which says that if someone goes ahead, gets approvals, moves forward in good faith and is allowed to proceed, the municipality cannot come back after the fact and say, oh, yeah, we made a mistake, you shouldn't have done that. And I think there's a real question of whether that applies here.
So do you have that in writing? That, that the, that the building inspector approved the, the site and the grading around the site?
He, he comes out there and he doesn't say anything. I mean, you know, if you get a permit for a two-story house and you build a four-story house, that's a problem. If the guy doesn't tell you, you can't put on the top two stories. Under the municipal stoppall doctrine.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny this application, case number 2025-17, tax map 143-017, based on the site visit and the, and the, and the neglect of filling in the undisturbed location of the wetland buffer setback more than 25 feet.
Do we hear a second?
Seconded.
Vaughn seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Peter? Yes? Aye, so Vaughn, Peter and John, aye?
And Jane.
And opposed? I'll vote opposed. We have three opposed and three in favor. Oh, we didn't have.
Kathy.
Kathy, did you vote?
No, but, but Jane is the, she's the alternate for Nancy.
Oh, Jane's the alternate, yes, that's right. Jane's the alternate for Nancy.
Yeah.
So are you for or against, Jane?
Oh, my God.
I'd actually like to change my vote to abstain.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I.
Aye?
Yeah.
You're approving the motion. Okay. What's the tally there?
Wait a minute, yeah, hold on.
It's three to three and abstained.
So Peter abstained. And Jane is John? Oh, you denied, okay. Oh, my God, just hold on a second. Jane.
I believe we have Jane, Vaughn and John.
Jane.
On one side and then Steve.
Oh, Jane is with Vaughn and John? Oh, okay. So they're, okay, so John, John Thurston, Vaughn Dugan and Jane Nielsen voted in favor to deny.
Correct.
Peter abstained.
Correct.
Then Doug, Steve and Roger voted, I mean, opposed.
Correct.
So it fails.
So it fails because it's three-three. Okay.
But your motion failed. Three-three, one.
I abstained because it seemed as if the site visitor was something that people were more than important to her. It's not there. Or that seemed to be just made.
Okay.
Trying to, I want to.
That's fine. Three of the four people who were at the site visit opposed the motion. So how do we proceed?
Somebody needs to make another motion.
Yeah, somebody needs to make another motion. I'm just turning, wondering what motion that should be.
Did we make a motion to approve the deck portion of the application?
Well, that's all this before? I'm sorry, the deck portion and not the patio portion? Is that what you're suggesting?
Does he need approval for that?
I don't know if that gains him anything.
It's in the buffer. It's in the buffer, it's not shown on the site plan.
What do you mean it's in the buffer, not shown on the site plan?
The site plan that was approved does not show the deck on the back of the house. It shows the back as.
What's that?
Foundation of the house is, is out of the buffer as the building inspector measured it.
Yes.
This, this plan includes a deck with a step.
Right.
And an impervious patio area, which we're questioning whether it's maintained, et Builder's point of view, put the deck with the stairs so he's got access out the back of the house.
So you're suggesting to approve the stairs but not the patio? Is that correct?
The stairs and the deck that comes down.
Well, as far as I know, he doesn't need any approval for the deck. That's outside the buffer.
It's got one square foot.
It's got one square foot inside?
One square foot.
Okay. Now, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the plan as drawn except for the pervious patio area.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Does that do anything for the applicant?
It allows the stairs to go to the backyard versus going down to the side. It allows the people to leave their house and go out onto their lawn area versus having to go down to the side of the house. It makes it a little bit easier for them, yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? John abstains? And is, everybody else is in favor? All right, so let's get the conditions in there.
And could I make a, another request?
Certainly.
Of the conditions? The plan is 17 by 22, not 24 by 36?
Yeah.
If that's okay?
17 this time?
Yeah, 17 by 22.
All right, so the recommendation for approval would include the plan as amended, as described by Steve just a moment ago.
As amended to show the, the deck and the stairs.
Yes, it should be shown the deck and the stairs and not the pervious patio. The applicant shall comply with the pre-construction siltation and erosion control measures as shown on the revised plan. An inspection of the town shall be required of siltation devices prior to construction. The final drawings, each individual sheet and every set of drawings must include a certified wetland scientist stamp, an LLS stamp. A final version of the narrative letter shall include certified wetland scientist stamp. The applicant shall submit the following: two sets of 17 by 22-inch black line final approved plans, one set of 11 by 17-inch final approved plans and one electronic version in PDF format. The applicant shall be responsible for payment of all recording fees. All the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation in this notice herein shall generally be determining. The applicant shall be required to monument the edge of wetlands in compliance with Section 175-9 dot 1 Wetlands Boundary Monumentation, including wetlands shall be delineated by a state of New Hampshire certified wetland scientist. Markers shall be placed at 50-foot intervals along the total wetland boundary following its general contour. Care shall be taken to ensure the markers are placed at the appropriate spacing at points closest to any proposed or existing structure located on the property. The cost shall be borne by the applicant, developer or their successors in interest. The applicant shall be responsible for submitting a letter of certification of the posting to the code enforcement office prior to issuance of any building permit. This special use permit is valid for a period of one year from the date of issue per zoning Section 175-186 dot C. Finally, the following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA 677 colon 15. An aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days of the date of the board voted to approve or disapprove the application or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676 colon 5, Roman numeral 3, within 30 days of the date the board made its decision. For findings of fact. Not sure how to word these findings of fact. This special use permit complies with the Wolford ordinances?
No, it doesn't.
No, I'm sorry, it does not?
Does not, does not. Does not, does not, does not follow the ordinance 175-7 buffers and setbacks from wetlands, specifically A, 1, 2, and 3.
I'm not sure that's correct. I believe the deck and the stairs do. Which is what we're approving.
It does now. If you remove the pervious patio, it does comply now.
Yeah.
Well, you're asking for a foot. You asked for a foot in the buffer.
Twelve square feet.
Twelve square...
Twelve square.
Twelve square feet, so...
With the deck and the stairs.
And that's what the special use permit's for.
Twelve square feet. Yeah.
Yeah, so the allowance via special use permit of twelve square feet in the buffer is what the special use permit is for, and therefore complies with the requirements of the special use permit. Right?
Okay, but it, but all other areas do not.
The other areas do not, but that's not what we're approving here.
Well, you wanted findings of the fact.
No, you're correct, yeah. Is that it? I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Bartholmas Family Trust, Six Percy Drive, tax map 163-007, conditional use permit for...
And they're still awake.
For short-term rental, case 2025-18, formal submission, public hearing, and conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit, case 2025-19.
Okay, so we have two things. One is the short-term rental, and submitted for that is the plot plan. It's my understanding that the issue is off-street parking. You saw those that went. There is off-street parking.
We need to do the ADU, because if we make the property a short-term rental, then we can't approve an ADU.
Okay.
So let's change...
Just let's do the ADU.
Change the order.
Yeah, if you could first introduce yourself.
Oh, yes. I'm Rhonda Bartholmas. I am the owner of... I'm the trustee of the Bartholmas Family Trust, which owns the property. Okay, so we're submitting for an ADU. The house is two floors, and one part of the second floor would be used as the ADU. There is a hallway that would, that, there's a door that connects from where I would live versus going up to the second floor where the tenant would be. And so, so there is an interior door, but there's, they would be on the second floor. So, it's two bedrooms, there is a bathroom, and then there is another space that's small and sort of, I don't know what it is, but I would change it to be a kind of a kitchenette and have that as an ADU for traveling nurses to Huggins or, you know, whatever. But that's, that's the proposal. And so you have drawings that show, you have, you have a couple of different things. You have the first floor and you have the second floor. And so, on the first floor, there is a tiny bit of hashed area that is just showing you. You enter through the front door and you, you go right upstairs. Like I said, there's not really anything on the first floor that somebody uses, but that's how you access it. And then, on the second floor, you can see there is area over the main house, and there is area over the garage. The area over the garage is not included in that. So only the hashed area is the area that is to be considered. Like I said, you can see two bedrooms, a bathroom, and another area that would be a kitchenette. And then I think the same plot plan for the, that was submitted for the short-term rental, just showing the parking. Another question that, that is, how do people access it? Is it going to look like a multi-family? It is not. They would use the front door, I use the back door, and the door from the garage, so...
No, no.
It doesn't change the entry, you know, the entry. Nothing changed. There's no structural changes, other than to add kitchen things for the kitchenette.
Could you explain how you computed the area?
Yes, so if you look at the drawings, we just took the...
You speak, speaking of the microphone, please.
Sorry. The hashed area of the second floor, there is a dimension that goes all the way across this way and all the way across that way. And so, when you multiply that, you get eight hundred and seventy-seven, I think. Eight seventy-seven point five. And when you look on the tax card, I'm using the effective area, which is the area that I am being taxed on. And so, we took the, on the tax card, it says three-quarter story finished, that's the second floor, and the first floor finished area, and then the base, the finished basement area. And so, those three things add up to three thousand and fifty, and so it comes out to twenty-eight point seven-seven percent of the total area.
Leanne, do you know if anybody verified the calculations for the square footage?
I did.
You did, thank you.
I have a question. I don't remember if, in the ADU, we specified if there had to be a living space that wasn't a bedroom, such as a living room. We've got a bedroom, bedroom, kitchen, bath.
I can speak to that, just that the rooms are very, very large. And so, we have queen bed on one side, and there is, like, the other half of the bedroom we have set up as a living room. There's a, like, a L-shaped couch, like a sectional couch kind of thing, and TV area. So, it's not a separate room, but it is a hangout area, for lack of a better word.
Okay.
And both rooms are very large, so you can also have, like, a kitchen table in the other one. So, they will still feel like, I just didn't want to section it off with walls.
Julie, I believe that in our definition of dwelling unit, it defines that a dwelling unit must include areas for sanitation, cooking, sleeping, living, but it does not segregate the rooms from each other.
Specifically.
Because in theory, you could have a studio apartment, for example, where it's all in one space.
I just couldn't remember.
So I don't think that's an issue in this case. You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the application is complete.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? All right, very good. We will now move to the public comment section. Would anybody from the public like to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Any further discussion?
Isn't there supposed to be a space here where there's designated one space parking on the plan? One parking space on the plan designated for the ADU?
There's four, four parking spaces.
Yeah, I know there's four places, but I think we have to specify on a plan.
It's on this plan.
I believe that there's one.
It's on that plan.
Is it on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we use that plan for both cases?
I think she has submitted both of these, didn't you? Did you submit this one too?
Yes, yes. It's showing the four.
Okay, so that one should go with the ADU, then. Make a fast copy and put it on the other one, too, yeah.
Any other discussion?
And do you want to designate which one is for the ADU?
Yes, I, yeah, I agree with Julie. I think you need to label the ADU on the...
So do you need me to, like, put white paint on the driveway?
Not on the parking spaces themselves, but on the plan.
On the plan.
Oh, okay.
You should write in which spaces are identified for the ADU.
Okay.
And, and also label the upstairs as the ADU.
Okay, the hashed area of the second floor.
Just label what is the ADU and what isn't.
Okay. And does it need to be more than the hashed, or you just want me to put the word "ADU" over the hashed?
You could put it as a key.
Yeah, you could do a little legend off to the side and say...
Okay, and you can put it in the middle of the...
I can, I can work with the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, those were weird technicalities, but I remember we had to specifically, not that they'll ever park in their place, but it has to be on the plan.
Usually people park wherever it's shaded.
Oh, here it is, the last page of this. Here it is. She's got it here twice.
I move to accept the application with the extra labeling of ADU and ADU parking place.
So you're amending your motion. You're amending your motion, right?
Well, we might not...
Yeah. But it was seconded.
It was.
Yeah. And now you're changing it. Right?
I thought I had motioned just to say that it's complete.
That's right.
And I was thinking I was making a new motion.
Okay.
New motion to approve.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Is that a condition of approval?
I, I move to accept the application with the addition of delineating the ADU space upstairs and an ADU parking space.
On the plans.
On the plan.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Very good.
Short-term rental?
No.
You don't need to do that?
No, no, we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, you have to read it. Oh, sorry.
We haven't gotten there yet. All right, is there any further discussion on the ADU application?
Yes, I believe the application sets, and the plan of review set forth the requirements for an ADU. In addition, I believe that the requirements of Section 175-215 for a conditional use permit have been met in that the site is suitable for the appropriate proposed use. There's adequate usable space, plenty of parking, adequate access, absent environmental constraints, and that the immediate neighborhood impact should be negligible to nonexistent, and it will not present an undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic.
Thank you, Roger. All right, I would make a motion that we approve this... I'm sorry? Yes, so I just wanted to add the...
I just wanted to get them addressed since they weren't...
I'm trying to get myself in line and add the conditions of approval before we vote. So I would propose to add as conditions of approval that the tenant shall revise the tenant floor plan as described, and that the following plans as amended are hereby incorporated into the approval. Plan one, tenant floor plan, plan two...
Shouldn't it be ADU floor plan?
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna add that.
Sorry.
Yes.
Plan one, ADU floor plan.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, thank you, Roger. Plan two, first floor plan, and plan three, site plan. Number two, the conditional use permit must have an active and substantial development exhibited by the issuance of a building permit within twenty-four months after the date of the planning board approval. This then allows the project to be exempt from all changes cited in RSA 674:39.1 for a period of five years. The applicant shall obtain a town of Wolfboro building permit and any associated permits for the interior construction of the ADU. Final drawings, the applicant shall submit two sets of eleven-by-seventeen final approved plan drawings. The conditional use permit is valid for one, period of one year from the date of issuance per zoning section 175-186(c). The applicant shall be responsible for payment of all recording fees for the notice of decision recordation. All of the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation in this notice herein shall generally be determining. Lastly, the following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA 677:15, and a aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within thirty days of the date of the board voted to approve or disapprove this application, or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676:5, Roman numeral three, within thirty days of the date the board made its decision. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good. You have your ADU. Now we'll move on to the short-term rentals. Findings of fact, Roger, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm up for this one. The application complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The ADU is on the second floor of an existing single-family dwelling. It is entirely within the existing dwelling, that it represents twenty-eight point seven-seven percent of the existing total habitable floor area of the existing single-family dwelling, that there is in excess of one parking space for the ADU. The applicant has stated that she will reside in the single-family dwelling, and that the subject property has been shown to have a New Hampshire Department Environmental Service approval for operation, and I already stated the site suitability, immediate neighborhood impact, and undue nuisance criteria.
Thank you, Roger. And now we're on to the short-term rental section, case 2025-18. All right, go ahead.
I would like to use it as a short-term rental. And I would like to do that without adding a kitchen. I mean, I will add the kitchen, but you can do short-term rentals without a kitchen, just bedrooms for, I don't know, somebody coming to a wedding for, you know, in town or something like that. So... It's the same space, it's the same use. And the other three parking spots would be for the short-term rentals.
The...
But approving is the ADU said that you needed to have the kitchen.
Yeah, yes.
We have basically said by approving that that you need to have the kitchen.
Yes.
You need sleeping, eating.
But that takes time to do. That takes time to do.
So if I'm not mistaken, she has a year to start construction.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
So is there anything preventing her, assuming that she gets approved for the short-term rental, is there anything preventing her from operating it as a short-term rental in its current condition prior to establishing the ADU?
Just for the summer months, you know, through the summer season.
That's fine, but I mean, it's just, you know, but ultimately, I mean, it's...
Understood.
To meet the definite...
Yes, that is the plan.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, I know that there was some concern addressed during our site visit earlier today about egress, but I believe that's going to be addressed by the fire department when they do their inspection.
I did also research that, in the meantime, just so you know. The minimum for an egressible window in New Hampshire is twenty inches wide by twenty-four inches high. These are four feet nine inches wide, so even if you just did half of that and did one of those cranking...
Well, so...
Acacement windows, it would still... Casement windows, it would still qualify for that.
Could I ask Vaughn, could I ask Vaughn what's, because you do, you do design, don't you? And so I'm not, I'm not debating whether or not you, I just want to hear it from one of our board members. Is that how you interpret it?
Well, actually, I look in the book, like a window book, and if it has E next to it, it meets egress. How's that?
I looked up the, the state of New Hampshire egress rules, and like I said, 24 inches high, and these are three foot two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. But just be aware, your windows aren't four, four feet wide, because there's two of them, so you have to take each one individually.
Yeah, right, right. So you would do, what was the size of the?
Well, regardless, you'll work with the fire department and make sure that complies. So, any further discussion or questions from the board? Oh, have, I'm sorry, have we, we accepted this as complete?
Not yet.
We have not. All right, so I make a motion to accept this application as complete.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any more discussion? Julie?
The word licensing keeps going through my head. Does it go from us to the Board of Selectmen to do that bit? Or is it just solely with our application now?
I believe it's just solely with us. Certainly the Board of Selectmen sets the fees.
And they did that?
No.
No, they haven't.
They still haven't done it?
No, because they, they weren't provided the fee structure to set the fees.
Until recently. They were provided the fee structure.
Yes, they were.
So can we even approve this?
But they had to notice the hearings. Yes.
So can we even approve this since?
Yes.
Or did you postate, postate the check, we're good? All right, so, so when we finish our part, since this is the first time we've done this, I'm just trying to.
That's fine.
Then all of this stuff goes through Leanne, she puts it in order, then it goes to the fire department, correct?
Well, it goes to. It goes to a number of departments, including the fire department.
And they have the last ones to sign off on it with an occupancy permit?
No.
That'd be the code officer.
Can you give us the rundown, please? We all need to know.
So once it, if the planning board approves this, then a notice of decision will be prepared, and the code enforcement officer and the fire chief will inspect, do a site visit and inspect. If there's a favorable inspection, then a certificate of compliance is issued through the building department. And then that is valid for two years. And then a reinspection will occur as long as all the conditions are met and the notice of decision is recorded at the registry.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further discussion. Go ahead, Roger.
On the number of bedrooms, there's actually two in the ADU. So you have two bedrooms, which means the total number of occupants is six, not eight.
Okay.
Because you're allowed two per bedroom plus two. So that gets you two, four for the bedrooms plus two, because downstairs doesn't count.
Okay, could I submit for the whole house to be a short-term rental? Would that impact?
It would not be an ADU then, you'd have to get rid of the ADU.
So you, certainly you could have the whole house as a short-term rental, but as Roger pointed out, not if it's an ADU, that would be too separate.
Got it, okay. So the short-term rental has a maximum occupancy of six.
In its present, in its present configuration.
Given that I'm living downstairs, yeah.
No, based on the bedrooms.
On the number of bedrooms, yeah.
Yeah, because on your application, you wrote three bedrooms.
Which is.
It's three bedrooms in the house, it's a three-bedroom septic system.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
That's what, that, that's what I think.
It says subject property, I see what you did. You did the whole building.
I did the, I did the septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And that's how maximum, yeah, so that's right there on page one, just isn't quite right.
And I think the plan needs to be revised to show where the short-term rental is, which would be, I think strictly just the upstairs would need to be shown and then the access.
Not the stairs? Is that what you mean?
No, the upstairs and the stairs would be the short-term rental.
Yeah, so it would be the same.
The area that you've shown is the ADU.
Yeah, it would be the same drawing.
It would be basically the same plan as the ADU, relabeled.
Right.
To label it as a short.
That's fine.
So that it's the two upstairs bedrooms in that space.
Yeah.
Plus the stairs.
Okay.
Would be labeled short-term rental.
Okay.
And then the plot plan that shows the parking.
Yeah.
All right, any further comments? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the short-term rental special, I'm sorry.
Oh, one, one note.
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize. Yes, you're right, Roger.
One note, if it's not going to have a kitchenette in it, you might want to take the kitchenette off that.
Okay. Yes, it will eventually, yeah.
Yeah. But if we approve it and it says it's on there, can she rent without it?
If I just put a refrigerator up there and a hot plate, does that count as a kitchenette?
The structure currently doesn't have a kitchenette. It has to be constructed. So that's why she asked the question. Could she have a short-term rental right now? Could she start renting it without the kitchenette?
So certainly I think she can rent it without the kitchenette. The question is, will the short-term rental application plan accurately reflect the building? And if it doesn't have a kitchen, maybe the kitchenette should be removed from the plan submission.
What is the definition of a kitchenette?
But she's going to be submitting a building permit for the kitchenette. So.
She needs cooking facilities for the ADU.
Right, so it's.
I'm sorry.
You're going to need cooking facilities in order to meet the definition of an ADU.
Yes, I understand that.
Yes.
No, no, but I think the question is, can she rent the STR prior to building the kitchen?
Yeah.
And if, in fact, she rents it prior to building the kitchen, does the plan for the STR need to remove the kitchen from the plan?
No, because, no. I think she can rent it before she puts in the kitchen.
Okay.
But the plan needs to show the kitchenette in order to qualify as an ADU.
Understood.
Yes, but that's a different application.
Correct. Well, we could just submit the drawings and like, write out the word kitchenette.
No, a kitchenette needs to be there. You need the kitchenette.
You need to keep it on.
But the short-term rental only needs to talk about bedrooms, so it doesn't have to talk about kitchenettes or anything else.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing, the public comment section.
Accept the application.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to accept the application. Thank you, Leanne.
You're welcome.
It's getting late. I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Seconded.
Seconded, Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right, let's open public comment. Don't see anybody here. Let's close the public comment. Any further discussion?
So we have to, are we making it conditional whether or not it's approved by the?
That's part of the regulation.
By definition, it has to be approved by the building inspector and the fire chief. She doesn't get, she, we're going to approve the permit, but she doesn't get to operate it unless it meets the inspection by the town officials.
That's listed on one of the.
That's the certificate of compliance.
Right.
That's one of the conditions of approval.
It's listed as a criteria under the ordinance.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for operation of a short-term rental at Six Percy Drive, along with the conditions that the site plan, Plan One, is included into the approval. The conditional use permit must have active and substantial development exhibited by the issuance. Do we need a building permit? No, we don't need that, do we?
No. She will need a building permit to construct the kitchenette.
But that's part of the ADU.
But that is part of the ADU.
Yeah, so we don't need the building permit for the STR.
Well, and it does say as a condition. No, but it is, if you're approving the site plan.
She does.
Oh, yes.
Then it does.
Right, right.
That's why it's a condition of approval.
Yes, because there's a kitchenette. So the conditional use permit must have active and substantial development exhibited by the issuance of building permit within 24 months after the planning board approval. This allows the project to be exempt from all changes cited in RSA 674:39.1 for a period of five years. The applicant shall obtain a Wolf, Town of Wolfboro building permit and any associated permits for the interior construction of the short-term rental as part of the approval process. And every two years thereafter, the dwelling unit must pass an inspection by the Wolfboro Fire and Rescue Department and by the code enforcement officer, which shall include the following. Smoke and carbon monoxide detectors shall meet New Hampshire State Fire Code and New Hampshire State Building Code requirements. All doors and windows designed to provide emergency escape must be in compliance with applicable codes. No space shall be used as a sleeping area unless there are two means of escape with property-sized windows and doors conforming to the New Hampshire State Fire Code and New Hampshire State Building Code. A functioning fire extinguisher shall be visibly installed in any kitchen area. Following each satisfactory inspection and sign-off by the fire department and code enforcement officer, a certificate of compliance shall be, is issued. The applicant shall submit a copy of the certificate of compliance to the planning and development office. Upon renewal of the state of New Hampshire Meals and Rentals Tax Operator's License, the applicant shall submit a copy of the renewed license to the planning and development office. Final drawings, the applicant shall submit the following. Two sets of 11 by 17 final approved drawing, plan drawings. The applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees for the notice of decision recordation. All of the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation and this notice herein shall generally be determining. The following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA 677:15, and aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days of the date the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676:5 Roman numeral 3 within 30 days of the date the board made its decision. Julie?
Does that say two bedrooms? Because the application says three.
The application asks about the septic system.
No, no, it says, in the short-term rental application, it says number of bedrooms of the subject property, three.
It should say two.
It should be two.
So it should be two.
Okay.
So let's amend that to two, and maximum occupancy should be six rather than eight.
Where are you amending that?
This is on the short-term rental conditional use application at the bottom.
Oh, I already amended that, yeah.
As amended.
As amended. Those are the, my motion and condition, and is it a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Findings of fact. Now, that should be an easy one, because Leanne was kind enough to write it all out there, wasn't she?
What?
So the, for findings of fact.
Things less legal, you're fine.
Yeah. The property is serviced by a private septic that meets the requirements outlined in the short-term rental requirements. It has identified parking for the short-term rental. The applicant has submitted the state of New Hampshire Meals and Rentals Tax Operator License. The applicant has provided the required contact information. I think that covers it for findings of fact. Thank you, Leanne. And now we have, last but not least, Wolfboro Area Children's Center, Brewster Academy, 180 and 176 South Main Street, tax map 218-89 and 218-94, boundary line adjustment, case 2024-20. Randy, nice to see you.
Yes.
Nice to see us too.
Randy Tatro, Norway Plains, for the applicants. The applicants, the Wolfboro Area Children's Center and Brewster Academy. It's 176, Children's Center's 180, Brewster Academy's 176, Main Street. I think we came before the board last month.
Excuse me, Randy, I need to understand on this one because I'm involved with the Brewster side of it.
Oh.
Steve's going to step down from this.
Yeah, I'm going to just sit.
And we'll have Kathy sit for Steve, if you would, Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Randy.
Sure. So as I was saying, we came before the board on a preliminary on this, because we're asking for a couple of waivers, most, most importantly, the form factor on the Brewster lot. We talked about the different things on that. This is essentially a 10,000-square-foot conveyance from Brewster Academy to the Children's Center to deal with some existing pavement encroachment and shed encroachment that's located on the northwesterly side of the property. You can see it in yellow there. I think we included colored copies, yeah, it kind of gives you an aerial view of that. And that's a recent, last fall drone, uh, picture of it. One of the other things that came up, again, I don't know if you guys want me to speak to the waivers or accept the application, or you want me to go ahead with the discussion, Doug.
I'll make a motion to grant the waivers, including the form factor.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the waivers? Do I need to read them off?
You haven't before.
All right, let's grant the waivers as requested. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Very good. Waivers are good.
They were for site, site conditions, because we're not proposing any construction, and the one for form factor. The other thing that came up that we, we issued a letter to, there was a couple small notes that we added to there. One of the ones was Kathy brought up about the overlay district and the coverage going up to 70%, from 30 to 70%, the overall coverage, which, which the coverages are not at issue here. The other thing that came up was the accessory structures on the lot. We researched that. I provided a letter to that effect, but in essence, the original site plan in 1993 showed two accessory dwellings. One was a storage building, and one was a rubbish, a refuge shed. So those were approved in 1993 at the original site plan.
I think you meant structures, not dwellings.
Did I say dwellings? Oh, structures, excuse me. It's been a long night. So, yeah, accessory structures, sheds, storage buildings type. So two were approved in 93, and then there wasn't any requirements for a number of accessory structures back then. So the two that got approved of the original site plan are still there. Then in 2001, in March of 2001, is when they came up with the two accessory structures. And if you had 80,000 square feet more, you could get an additional one. So that came up in, I think, March of 2001. In June of 2001, the Children's Center got a building permit for two additional sheds. And those were approved building permit, and those are still there in the same location. So the question came up, well, how many do they get? How many are grandfathered? And so the town planner, in our planner review that I got today, does outline an opinion, I'm a little confused with it, but there's four accessory dwellings out there. does outline an opinion, I'm a little confused with it, but there's four accessory dwellings out there, accessory structures. The one in question is the 8 by 10 refuge or garbage shed that is close to the property line as adjusted. And that was the one we talked about whether or not it had to meet the 10 feet or it just could be put on its own property and there was a discussion about that. In her planner review, she is asking for the board to clarify or certify to, you know, how many do they get, I guess. So if the original two were grandfathered, the second two were permitted by the, you know, by a building permit, I guess that would be four. So the problem is, is now you get two plus one more if you have over 80,000, which they do. So that would be three. So that was the question I think that was being wrestled with. Is everybody clear on that? I know it's a little bit, and it's late. They have four. Yeah, so they have four. One is the one in particular that's, that we're trying to get on, on the Children's Center's property. I think that was just about the only other item that was brought up.
So Randy, what's the, what's the deal with the trash shed?
It's, it's been, always been better than a screen dumpster. It's been a shed that they can put the rubbish in from the, in there and they take it in and out of there. It looks like it's...
Does it have a cover or is it just...
It's a shed itself with doors that close. You know, it's an 8 by 10 shed that you use for...
A complete shed with a lock on it.
Yeah.
That's bear-proof because they have diapers and nasty stuff.
Yeah.
And the reason that it's where it's at, because like I was there for like 15 years, and my kid worked there for a while. It's directly across from the door where everyone going out can take their trash.
So does it meet the setback?
75 times a day.
It was on the other property to begin with, John, and now it's probably three, the way... We had to have 10,000 square feet and the deal between Brewster and the owners was 10,000 square feet in that area. So we tried to adjust that 10,000 square feet around the area that was encroaching, including the shed. What came up was, it's not 10 feet from the lot. Can it be moved a little bit, like five, six, 10 feet, five, six, eight feet in towards the edge of the pavement to comply with the 10 feet? So there was some discussion about that, whether that needed to be or not.
So usually, usually that is the case, isn't it? That the, if you want to do a boundary line adjustment, all the structures need to meet the setback?
Yeah, so that was, so there was a discussion, is it movable, you know? Do they really have to move it, that kind of thing? And it's obviously, the only problem with that is, why I was glad I got on tonight is because they're trying to, they're trying to, should they get approved, do this transaction before the end of the fiscal year. And Brewster's kind of getting done their thing right now. So they're trying to do, make this conveyance by the end of June. So if there is a condition by the planning board to move it, can it be a subsequent condition of approval with a timeframe so that they can get the plan signed and go through their conveyance? And so that's what we request from the board.
If the building needs to be moved, is that going to take away from any of the parking places?
No, I think if you look close on that, you can see that the parking area is, there's a handicapped van strike right there, which I think it could be just moved towards that and then that would be always open to walk in there. Because that's just for letting someone out of a, out of the van.
Is it down in this lower corner, is that where it is?
Yeah, turn the page over.
Yeah, flip it over again. Flip it over, that's hard to read.
Yeah, so where it is, John, is right down here in this corner. So you can see that if they moved it 10, you can see where the 10-foot setback line is right there. So we'd have to move it in, square it up right by that crosshatched area. I think that would be the best place for it.
Yeah, I think it needs to meet the setback and I think we're going to need a plan showing it in its new location.
Okay, a proposed location.
But that can be a condition of the approval.
Yeah. I just...
Yeah, because they can't do it, you know, during the week or anything, so it's going to take a couple of weeks to do it.
Right, right, and so that's why I request to put like a subsequent condition, a timeframe on it, if that's the board's preference.
Yeah, have it moved within 30 days or something.
Yeah.
But we'll get a plan that shows it in its new location.
Well, I'll submit it, I'll submit that correction with the final plan so the MyLog is shown on there to be relocated, you know, that way. It hasn't been yet, so I can't say it has, but I can put to be relocated and show it that it meets the 10 feet. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to accept this application as complete.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll open the public hearing, nobody here, so we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions?
Well, to address the town planners' comment on accessory structures, I would suggest stating in the approval the applicant has provided information demonstrating that the four accessory buildings are lawfully existing structures. Is that true, Randy?
Yeah, I believe it is. I think the question was, is it just four or do they get any more?
Well, think of it also this way, you keep calling a refuge shed in lieu of a dumpster.
Yeah, again, if they...
Okay, it could be put that way. So we've got three shed sheds and this structure in lieu of a dumpster.
The confusing part was, because originally it was approved, do they, are they just grandfathered and then you get three? Or do you not? And I think that was what was being wrestled with and so I really, you know, I mean, that's not up to me, so.
But what I'm also saying is, is we always ask for dumpster sites on all of our plans for things.
And then not considered accessory structures.
That's right. So I would call that an enclosed dumpster containment area.
Right.
No.
It's a refuge shed, but you say in lieu of dumpster, you know? It's totally contained. And that will take two boxes of like, oh, now we only have three sheds.
Randy, is that something you want labeled any better or?
No.
I'm in favor of saying that two of those sheds were grandfathered and two had building permits.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Well, that's what lawfully existing says.
And that's the same thing, yeah, yeah.
But I think that you're now limited to four sheds on the property.
Again, that's what I think the town planner would, wants to have determined. Should they go for site review someday, that could come up.
Okay.
Okay, so four sheds it is.
Doug?
Yeah?
Where are we going?
Someone want to make a motion?
I'm moving that we approve this boundary line adjustment.
I'll second that.
Including moving the shed so it's not in the setback.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
We all have someone with a story.
Conditions?
Let's see, I'm trying to get conditions to be met prior to signing of plans. The following plans amended as discussed this evening for a boundary line adjustment plan and a boundary line adjustment plan ortho. Accessory structures permitted as described in the discussion earlier this evening, which I believe is four, is that right, that we ended up with? We are allowing the waiver for the form factor lot standardization. The applicant shall be responsible for setting of monumentation and submission of certificate of monumentation and updating the plan set, including original stamps and signatures from an L, signatures, well, it's truncated error. The final approved and received boundary line adjustment plan shall be recorded at the County Registry of Deeds per RSA 676:3 Roman numeral 3. Within six months of the approved date, failure to comply with this requirement shall render the subdivision null and void. If granted, the applicant shall receive and add a note to the final recorded plan indicating the approved waivers from subdivision regulations. One draft copy of final plans prior to final drawings being submitted. Final drawings will include two sets of 24 by 36 inch black line approved plans, one set of 11 by 17 inch final approved and one electronic version in PDF format. Do we record movement of the shed? We did not. The shed shall be moved within 30 days following the approval. Is that appropriate?
With the rain lately, you might want to make it 60.
60? Okay, so the shed shall be moved within 60 days following the approval. All documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements imposed by other agencies that are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation notice herein shall generally be determined. After approval, the applicant shall be responsible for payment of the recording of the notice of decision at the Carroll County Registry of Deeds. And the following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA 677:15. Any person aggrieved by any decision of the planning board may appeal the decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days after the date upon which the board voted to approve or disapprove the application or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676:5 Roman numeral 3 within 30 days following the date the board has made its decision.
I'm not sure if you said it, I might have missed it, but if you didn't, just, the plans are going to be revised to reflect the shed, the relocation of the shed.
I, I didn't say specifically... Yes, so I said amended as discussed this evening, but it should show the relocated position of the shed.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Leanne. Yes. Right, right. I think that's it. All right, do we want to go through minutes this evening?
No.
No, let's put...
Most of them to adjourn.
Finding of fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody... Oh, my God.
There you go. Come on, Peter.
The rule is based on the fact that there is no substantial change to the way the structures are arranged on the property other than proper setback for one shed and boundary line adjustment is something which makes things more realistic. And form factors for various properties is inconsequential in this case.
Very good. And I'll second Roger's motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.